Order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Could we have a roll call?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
One vacancy.
Terrific, okay. If you'll all follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any suggested changes to the agenda, Lucas?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to public communications. Time set aside for anyone here present or out in television land to comment on items of city business not on the current agenda. Is there anyone here present who wishes to speak under public comment? Seeing none, Sheri, do we have any raised hands out there?
Nope.
Very good, then we'll move on to the first public hearing item. A design review permit and a variance at fourteen forty Daily Road. Now, I know this is to be continued, but I suspect that we have people here who wish to speak on this tonight, and I think we should allow that even, even though the recommendation at the request of the applicant is to continue the case.
Well, I would change the should to shall. As a public hearing, we are required to provide public with an opportunity to speak. Even if the item itself has been identified as being continued, we still have to follow that same process. The staff is recommending that no decision be made tonight, that the item instead be continued to a date certain. I think we've got, uh, wrong again here, or July seventeen.
Four weeks hence, July fifteenth, or July seventeen.
July seventeen.
Yeah.
So with that, I'm, I'm not providing any sort of a staff report. There is nothing to provide. The applicant is not gonna, is not available, cannot be here tonight. Um, the same thing is true with the architect and the rest of their team, so.
I just noticed also that there is, um, an item omitted from the agenda, and that is a discussion of, uh, commissioners. Familiarity with the venues and any explanation of ex parte contacts.
Oh, ex parte contacts.
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably should do that before we go and dive into this item.
Right.
Regarding the fourteen forty Daily, I have driven past the property. I do not know or have spoken to the applicant.
Very good, Jamie?
I'm not familiar with the property and have not spoken with.
Okay.
The principals.
Uh, I'm familiar with the, the area, um, and I've had one ex parte contact, um, not related to the, um, the owner or the proposal, just one of the neighbors.
Okay, I'm familiar with the property this time around and last time around, and I did get a call from Mr. Blatts this afternoon, who explained that he would be coming to the meeting. He knew it would be continued, but wanted to speak anyway, and I have a card from him. And he alluded to there being a number of issues that we need to discuss, and I said, I look forward to that as well.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so let's go on to the public hearing item.
Very good. You mean from the hearing from the public, open it up for public here, public comment.
Is there anything that you want to say before we start?
Nope.
Okay, this is for a DRP and a variance and a proposed single-story, single-family residence at fourteen forty Daily Road. I have one card, one speaker card. Ryan Blatts, please come up, and then we'll ask if there's anyone else.
Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate it. Ryan Blatts, I am here representing Mr. Brad Tully, who is the neighboring property at fourteen twenty Daily Road. Uh, we've been involved in this since it came up a number of years ago, and, um, I understand that there's a continuation, and I'm not going to get into the nuts and bolts of some of the issues that we may bring up at the formal hearing. But I did want to bring up that there's a lot of confusion out in the public because originally, when this project came forward, there was an added trail easement access at the top of Daily Road that the neighbors in the neighborhood had actually contacted us. There was a neighborhood meeting, there were a lot of people who showed up at that meeting, and they are very concerned and not sure what's going on. There's also this rumor that's going around in the public about, uh, Daily Road easement that has some confusion about whether that easement goes all the way up to the top of, not what you, well, you'd call it Daily Road, but actually to the top where Shelf Road is. Daily Road and where this is located, if you know, um, Montgomery and Daily kind of turn around and come into a circle. The top of that circle, there's a little area that goes up, that is the additional part of Daily Road. That stops, there's another driveway that goes to the left from there, but where that stops, there's a gate, and that's the subject property that is fourteen twenty Daily Road. So I wanted to clarify and get something because I'm getting a lot of questions. My client's getting a lot of questions about, is there this trailhead easement situation that's going to be part of the, uh, the proposal? And should people be concerned about that? Because they had thought it was going away. When James Vega was the city manager, um, it had been on the staff report, but they had said they weren't going to push it forward ever again, and everybody thought it was dead. They're not sure, and I also wanted to make sure that there's clarification, and I even have a copy of the deed for the easement. It reads a little funny because the city limits used to be significantly different. What it talks about in the easement is line twelve in the recorder's book, and then going south from there, it looks like thirteen hundred and fifty feet down to what would be the former border of the city of Ojai. When the original planners and I were talking about this a number of years ago, and this was even, uh, Lucas was maybe barely there, but even this might have been a little bit before Lucas was there because originally it was Luke Connolly, um, a number of years ago, who was the one who made the initial determination, and his reading was that this Daily Road easement went all the way up to the top, went all the way to the trail, and that that would be the frontage of the property for considerations of what was the front and the sides. And, uh, we worked through that, and at that point, it was clear, at least at that point, that this easement didn't exist any further up, that there was some confusion thinking that the city limit line was where it is today, which is up near Shelf Road versus where it was back then, which was thirteen hundred and fifty feet south of where line twelve is on the book. Um, I won't get into all the nitty-gritty, but there are a number of issues that we are going to address, and some of them are very similar to what happened before, although this project is very different. It has changed hands from what happened a few years ago, and there's drainage issues, setback issues, and there's a big variance that's part of it. We will be briefing all this, but since we haven't seen a staff report yet, we don't know all the issues that may or may not be there, and there is briefing that's in the file that we have provided previously. That's pretty expensive about, extensive about what all these issues are. And I hope that the Commissioners can, there's a lot of technical stuff, there's a lot of minutia. There's, it's a complicated project, um, there's some zoning map issues that are part of it as well. But we really wanted to make sure at least we were letting you know, give you a little heads up on some of those concerns. But more importantly, with the outreach that we're getting from the public, seeing if there's any answers to this trailhead easement and making sure the issue of the Daily Road easement is clarified so that there's no confusion at the bigger public meeting. Thank you. I'll take any questions if there are any. I know in public speaking there's not, but. Anything, Lucas?
I don't, I don't have any questions yet because I don't know enough to ask anything.
Can I?
Except.
Can I just respond to?
Sure, please go ahead.
Okay. When the staff report's released, it'll address the, the point that you're, that you're speaking to directly, which is the trail easement, um, component.
And so we won't expect anything till the staff report comes out?
Correct.
Okay, and then as far as the Daily Road easement, is it, is there any confusion on that anymore? Or is it still? I mean, we just heard from somebody today, which was an architect in town, who's like, no, that easement goes all the way up, and we're going, oh, wait a minute.
We'll clarify, we're, well, it'll be clarified in the staff report.
Okay.
That's as far as I'm able to go, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Someone else who wishes to speak? Please come forward, identify yourself and give us your thoughts. We are talking about item number one.
Yes, I'm Brad Tully. I live at fourteen twenty Daily Road next to the proposed project. And I just have to say, I'm put in a terrible bind by his unwillingness to address this issue and let us know whether, what he's going to do with this trail easement because I was sure it was not an issue, but I guarantee you, there's any number of neighbors out there that are just going to be very upset about this. And if it's not an issue, I don't want to bring it up. But where I am now, based on what he said tonight and said the last time, I have to tell people, yeah, that this is an issue that's going to come up. We won't know anything about it till the, till the staff report is issued. I feel completely sandbagged on this. I think it's completely inappropriate. And what's going to happen is there's going to be a whole roomful of angry people, and I think it may be unnecessary. So I was trying to do everybody a favor by getting clarity so people don't have to get worked up on this issue if they don't need to, but my conclusion is they need to get worked up on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item? Sheri, any raised hands out there in the waiting room?
No.
All right, then we will close the public comment portion of this public hearing. And the recommendation from staff is that we consider continuation to a date certain, namely June seventeenth, or July seventeen, excuse me, yes.
I move that we continue the item to July seventeenth.
All right, second half.
Okay, any discussion?
No, I mean, we, there's not much to discuss.
Make sure your microphone's on.
Oh, sorry, I, I don't know if there's, there's much to discuss. We don't have a staff report, we're not sure of the details.
Discussing the motion for continuation.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, I'm, I'm good, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Sheri, let's look, call a roll then on item one.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes. Very good, let's move on to item number two. A proposed ordinance, TA twenty-three dash zero zero two. This has been kicking around a while. Uh, regarding. Movable tiny houses, okay?
MTH, so, uh, before Sarah, Sarah has a PowerPoint that she's going to.
Yep.
Put, put up before she, before she goes into it. Um, I just wanted to give just a little bit of background. This is the third time this body has had a chance to review and kind of kick the tires and discuss the matter itself, which is before the body, as a resolution, um, which the resolution then has a draft ordinance. Draft, draft, draft. In addition to that, within the staff report, Sarah will go into some of the details of things that weren't added into the, to the ordinance but are up for discussion and to provide some clarification and then just have, have a discussion.
And there, there are others that were added that I don't recall from the previous version.
Yeah, there were some.
I think we ought to air all of it.
Yes, exactly, we'll air it all out, and certainly this is the time to do that. Um, so with that, I'll leave it up to, to Sarah to go through, um, the PowerPoint, and then we'll certainly open it up for conversation.
Terrific.
Q and A first, and then open it up for public hearing, and then bring it back for, um, discussion.
Right, very good.
Cool. All righty.
Take it away, Sarah.
Thank you, lovely to see you all again.
I see you too.
I, is it up to me to put it on there?
Yeah.
Okay, great, sorry.
Hit the magic share button.
Yeah, let's see.
Oh, share screen, is that? Oh.
Yeah, it's right here.
Yippee.
All right, let's get started. Okay, great, so like Lucas said, um, this is an item we've seen a ton of times. Um, but I wanted to make a presentation just because it is now a public hearing item, so kind of give a refresh on everything that's happened and, um, everything new that we've added. So movable tiny houses, a proposed ordinance. Uh, so to begin, I just wanted to give some examples of movable tiny houses. I'm sure most of us are familiar with them, but for those that might not be, here are some examples. Um, as you can see, most have decks, one doesn't have a deck. There's a nice array of different types of movable tiny houses here, um, so.
They all were at one point on wheels.
Yes, yes, because that is how they come in, unless they were built on site. However, I don't believe that is the case for any of these. Anyways, um, this one here actually is in the Ojai Valley. I'm not sure exactly where, but I looked up tiny houses in Ojai, and this came up, so it's cool, it's close by.
I've heard there are two.
Yeah, at the moment, there are two, and I think there is also another one being developed. So total of three that kind of went through the pilot program. So this is just a brief timeline to get everybody caught up. So in two thousand eighteen, that was when tiny houses were first discussed by both the Planning Commission and City Council, and it wasn't until two thousand twenty-one that the two-year pilot program was enacted by City Council, um, and that allowed for the development of ten tiny movable houses per year, so a total of twenty within the two-year time span. And then in two thousand twenty-three, December of two thousand twenty-three, that pilot program came to an end and is now being considered for renewal and expansion, and the item has since been reviewed by the, the Planning Commission twice. This would be the third time. All right, so that pilot program, so some outcomes and lessons. Um, from that pilot program, two developed tiny houses came out. There is one currently in development. Um, and although that seems like a minimal number considering twenty was the allotted amount, I think it was really helpful to help us identify some barriers to entry, um, and we've discussed those previously. One of them would be the requirement for a third-party ANSI inspector, which proved to be a little bit redundant and at the time proved difficult to attain. Um, and another thing was that there's a lack of, there was a lack of specific guidelines due to the ordinance being grouped in within ADUs, so it didn't have its own separate guidelines. Um, despite all of this, there is continued interest from the public post-program. We do have a waitlist, and there are people who continually do ask about the tiny homes. So from all of that, the outcome is a proposed new ordinance separating movable tiny houses from ADUs in the Ojai municipal code. All right, so this is kind of what we touched on last time in February, so some previously applied modifications to the ordinance. Um, one would be a new section of the code dedicated to movable tiny houses, so like I said, separate from ADUs where it currently resides. Um, increased options for pads and foundations, so moving away from strictly concrete to, I had examples, what was it? Um, DG, decompose granite, is that what it is? Um, and a few other more, less invasive options. Um, the removal of the requirement for third-party ANSI inspections for specifically pre-built tiny houses. That also proved to be redundant as those pre-built tiny houses are being inspected as they're manufactured. Um, and that kind of leads me to the next point, which is allowing tiny houses to be built on-site. In this case, we would need an ANSI inspection because they are not pre-manufactured and being checked as they're built. Um, and then also allowing land leasing opportunities, so opening up options for people who might not be able to buy a home or land for their tiny homes. All right, so then some additional barriers that we've identified. Um, in between February and now, we were lucky enough to have a nice conversation with a local tiny home company in Camarillo, local to Ventura County. Um, and through that conversation, we were able to identify some barriers that I think ourselves, we wouldn't have been able to know because we weren't personally involved with any tiny home development processes. So, um, one of those would be the deck requirement. I would not have known this, but it apparently is, um, pretty costly for the decks. Um, and I think it is something that is kind of excessive and expensive. So for that, we have a, a proposed alternative, which would be to reduce or eliminate deck requirements to minimize costs. And then the other thing would be sewage. So the barrier here is that connection or installation is expensive and invasive. The proposed alternative here would be compostable toilets. Diving a little deeper into the sewage barriers, so for the three tiny homes that have been developed and are currently being developed in Ojai, the permit cost for the ins, for installation of a sewer line is as follows, and this is just for permits. So one of the tiny houses came out to around eight thousand dollars, another one was sixteen thousand five hundred, and then five thousand seven hundred. So pretty costly, and again, this is just for the permits. And in talking with, um, that local tiny home company, they were the ones who did work on the tiny homes here. They said that the plumbing costs can double the total expenses causing total sewer connection costs in Ojai to range from ten thousand, roughly ten thousand to thirty-three thousand or more. So as you can see, it's a pretty costly process. Um, so the alternative we are proposing is compostable toilets. So a little bit about compostable toilets. The cost is between two K to four K, the models that we're looking at, um, or we've been, I guess, suggested. Um, some of the benefits, they are great for the environment, good for those with a green thumb. They're cost-effective and movable. Um, those things make it a good option for those on a tighter budget, those who do not have the appropriate slope for traditional sewer connections, those intending to use tiny houses temporarily. And I highlighted, highlighted temporarily because I think this is an important fact to consider. Um, movable tiny houses, a lot of the times are going to be temporary, so the thought of installing a permanent sewer line, i- it seems a little bit invasive. So having something like a compostable toilet, it is movable. Um, and I think in the case of movable tiny houses, it could be a great option. Um, the model shown to the right here is the Sunmar Centrex three thousand composting toilet system. This was a system that was recommended. As you can see, you have the tank on the bottom, and then the toilets on the top. We do have some additional information on how they work if you guys are interested also. All right, and then moving forward, so here's an example from Venture Tiny Homes, um, of a model. So as you can see, we have the insides and the outsides, very cool. You can see over here, it doesn't have a deck. Um, it could have a deck if you'd like, but that kind of just goes to show that either way is possible, but minimizing those requirements does allow for a little bit more flexibility for people who are interested. And then to give an idea of the cost, um, this is for that same model, what the cost breakdown would look like depending on length, width, height, and a little bit more of the specs, which are kind of tiny, but, yeah. All right, and finally, some additional info. The last time we spoke, we talked about the ANSI inspections and how, um, it, at the time, was proven to be difficult to obtain. In the time since, we spoke with Venture Tiny Homes, and we have identified some ANSI inspection, or companies that do ANSI inspections that are local. One of them would be Pacific West Tiny Home, Inc., and NOAA certification, and both of those offer remote digitized inspections.
What's that mean?
It would be, I, I believe, I spoke with NOAA certification. They have an app where you would FaceTime them with an inspector, and they would inspect that way. Walk you through.
It's referred to as video inspections.
You, you do video inspections when the walls are partly up, and then when they're mostly up, and then when they're all done?
Some, some inspections can be done via video, yes.
Okay.
And this is something too, we can always gather like more information on, you know, because the inspection side of it, I personally don't know too much, but this is what was relayed to me. And it just shows that there are options for inspections. All right.
I would say, just to clarify, the preferred option is in, in-person inspection. On rare occasions, um, even our building official has, has done video inspections, but I mean, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, we're, it's on, it's in-person inspections.
When I did a remodel, it was all in-person inspections.
Right.
All right, so finally, the recommendation would be that the Planning Commission receive the information and presentation provided by staff and ask clarifying questions, open the matter for public comments, and finally, consider the matter and adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council approve the draft ordinance establishing regulations and guidelines for movable tiny houses within the Ojai municipal code. Thank you very much.
Okay. Questions for staff?
There's a question, I guess, for Lucas. In this, there's a recommendation.
Pull the microphone closer.
Yeah, that's on.
Okay.
Yeah, they're kind of.
I understand that there's a recommendation that the concrete pad be no longer required, that it be replaced by gravel or dirt.
Yeah.
And, um, at least my experience with.
Well, decompose granite, which is a little different than dirt.
Excuse me?
Decompose granite would be better, yeah, DG, yeah.
Well, DG's a little better than dirt, but, um, uh, that wasn't clear. In fact, it didn't use the DG word, I think, in here. But, uh, every time I've bought a house or moved house and had inspections, the idea of a house sitting on dirt as opposed to on a con, con, concrete piling of some sort was dangerous because it allowed for termites and other infestations that are soil-based to migrate from the soil into the, into the building. And so the question is, I guess I could understand gravel, but I have a hard time understanding any other substance where there might be subterranean, um, pests, um, being a, an allowable surface upon which to put a building. That's, that's question number one. I'll talk about the sewer in a minute, but.
You want me to answer the first question?
Yes, please.
Okay, so from a, a concrete pad standpoint, the cost is, is pretty excessive. I don't have the square foot for, for the cost for concrete, but it gets, it gets very expensive very quickly, and the compaction piece along with that. So the alternative to that is looking at gravel as a compaction piece, which then allows for percolation to a certain faction, and then decompose granite. Now, in both of those cases, we could look at, um, only on chassis as an alternative, but if, if it's a, a tiny home that's being placed on and not with, on chassis, then we could look at only the concrete option, um, as a pad to avoid the situation that you're just mentioning.
And something you just said, is it our job to lower the cost of these tiny homes? Is that, uh?
Yes.
An obligation that we as the Planning Commission have?
That is an obligation that's been identified by City Council when this came forward back in September.
I thought it was to, to come up with things that.
Remove barriers and, and.
Remove barriers.
Remove costs, yeah.
Well, I mean, virtually, virtually anything that generates cost could be on a, on a list for the City Council, and a, um, uh, a vendor selling these things, um, could come up with lots of ways to cut costs and deliver a product that I think we have to ask ourselves, is it appropriate that we encourage the construction of houses that are easily infest, infiltrated by bugs? And, uh, and, um, should we be marching backwards towards, uh, having, uh, toilets in the backyard? As opposed to that are not connected to septic tanks or sewers?
The sewer question is what you're going to bring up next, or do you want to finish the conversation with?
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm jumping to my next question. And that is that, um, I'm just, I'm astounded that we would be considering a building which is required to, as I believe, look like the, the, the main house on the lot. Uh, you know, in terms of color and materials and other things. We're requiring it to be sympathetic with, with those things, but we're allowing to put a tank in underneath for the, for a toilet, um.
Commissioner, I hate to interrupt you.
Yes.
It sounds like we're getting a little bit into discussion.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yeah.
I know, I know you, we feel passionately about this. So if we have questions, let's ask them in this space and then go to public comment, and then we can get into the discussion.
I have a question.
Well, hold on, did you, was there a question baked into that?
Commissioner?
Yeah, how do you feel about that?
Good question.
Well, I've had general questions about feeling, and look, staff doesn't have feelings. We provide facts, um, in the, in this space. So I think Sarah's done an excellent job of, of unpacking some of the factual pieces that exist with compostable toilets as, as it's been identified. Now, you will notice that within the ordinance itself, it's not baked into the draft ordinance. It's meant for a discussion piece, for potential consideration. And in addition to that, it, I mean, if you start running the numbers in terms of, of connections and other factors that come into play there, there is a cost associated with, with the sewer piece. Um, it's, it's just a known, it, that's a known fact. ADUs have that cost, they bear that cost.
Twenty-first century is requiring.
Absolutely, absolutely, so.
Sewage and sewage, uh, costs.
So, but there is an alternative, and I think that's really what, so if we look at the whole, and this is just a response to the sewer piece, and I think probably all four of you probably have a similar, um, no, maybe not, I don't want to suppose any sort of comments or, or questions that come along with that. But to answer your question kind of more directly, the council had asked for generally areas in which to, to reduce cost. They had identified pad, but they were also giving latitude to the, to the, um, to staff to look at. They had identified pad, but they were also giving latitude to the, to staff to look at all different avenues. This one just kind of popped up and we started digging deeper into it and found that there is these cost barriers. I wouldn't say it's prohibitive by any stretch of the imagination, but it's definitely a factor that we were looking at in terms of driving down some of that cost. Look, housing costs in Ventura County are one of the higher ones. We're not, we're winning in the wrong way, right? So how do we, how, hold on, just answering a question regarding sewer and then kind of, and then stopping at that and we can go from there. This is one of the pieces, not necessarily the solution to the overall puzzle. Obviously, every time we talk about solutions, it's a piece to the puzzle. As simple as that.
What is the spread of a low-cost ADU in a tiny home which has a compostable toilet?
I don't think it's fair to compare an ADU cost to a tiny house cost because the ADU is built onsite every time. A tiny house, more times than not, is going to be brought onsite, but there is going to be opportunity for the potential siding and building of a tiny house onsite and then being inspected by that third-party ANSI in terms of meeting those ANSI standards. And in our research, in terms of doing a deeper dive, we didn't think there was anybody in Ventura County. And in having that conversation with one of the tiny house builders, they said, actually, there's two that we've been using. And that was an eye-opener to me because our initial research showed that there weren't any. So doing that deeper dive and having those conversations with those groups led us down the path of, actually, there's two. There's two. So this is actually a door that had been closed, we thought, but that has now been reopened. Tiny houses are less expensive, hands down. Now, I can look at generally the numbers on a two-one, a two-bedroom, one-bath, and we could probably do a comparative piece there. But the construction piece in terms of onsite versus in a warehouse, it's not the same. The standards aren't the same. So it's hard to judge one versus the other, knowing that the standards for an ADU are going to be different than the standards for a tiny house. It's, I don't think it's a fair assessment. Because the numbers are going to be inflated for the ADU.
If I might add, I also want to just put emphasis on the fact that this is coming directly from people who have worked in Ojai, not just the builder, but also residents who have tiny homes. This was an issue for them that they brought up and in terms of engaging the community in this conversation, the people who have directly faced these issues, I think that's something to consider.
John?
Yeah, did you want to go first?
Sure. What is the height off the ground of the chassis of a movable house, tiny house? How much space is there? I mean, I'm envisioning wheels, so I'm thinking it's up like three feet off the ground?
Oh, you're talking about from the ground-
From the ground to the bottom of the-
Foundation.
Say the floor of the tiny house.
Yes. Is that not the chassis?
I think it's, I think it's about three feet.
It is about three feet, okay. So that's big enough to accommodate the toilet sizes, obviously.
I don't know, compostable toilets, how big are those?
Compostable.
Yes, there's a lot of different models of compostable toilets, but from my research, it should, you know, because these are, these have been seen in tiny homes. This is something that has been done before. I think it really depends on the model, what the size is. I can't tell you an exact size, but from what I understand, it does go underneath.
Yeah, okay. The sewer connection, is it, do we allow, or does the purveyor allow a coordinated, a single sewer that, and then just connected to the primary house to the tiny?
It's done all the time.
Yes.
So that would be within your $5,000 range? You had a range of cost?
No, that's not the same thing.
So those costs are taken directly from the three tiny houses that are in Ojai, and from my understanding, those tiny houses had to run completely new sewer lines, and I guess that's just dependent on their situation. So I'm sure there's a possibility for it to be connected to the main sewer line, but maybe that wasn't possible in these situations, so this just offers another solution in that case.
The five to $16,000 charge that was discussed is the permit from the sewer district. The construction of the facility itself is on top of that.
Okay, so like the 5,000 permit would be to add it to the primary house versus putting in a whole new?
Would be to add that amount of load on the sanitary sewer system.
Okay, then why is there a range of five to six? Okay.
Oh, and why is it different? Yes, okay. There is a standard charge, which is just over 16,000 for a single-family residence.
Okay.
If you have something else like an ADU, like a movable tiny home, then the sanitary district does what they call a drainage fixture unit count. So there's a certain number of points you get for a sink with a faucet, a certain number of points that you get if you had a drain in the floor, for whatever reason, a certain number of points that you get for a toilet or a shower or a bathtub. And when they add those up, the assumption is 25 points is standard for a house, and that's what costs about 16,000. Most ADUs run about half that because they're smaller, they have fewer sinks, fewer toilets, fewer showers, whatever. And so this range of five to 16, it would be quite a large movable tiny house to require a $16,000 permit. That would be 25 drainage fixture units, which would be very unusual.
Okay, thank you.
The average for ADUs, as I reckon, as I have looked at it over eight years, or six years now, is about half that, so maybe 8,000 on average. That's for the permit. But then to actually make the connection is a separate thing that is on the parcel owner or the homeowner, or in this case, whoever wants to pay for the movable tiny house to be connected.
Okay, thank you. Are the build-onsite tiny houses constructed to be movable?
Or are they not movable?
I mean, we're in the classification of movable tiny houses, so this seems like a silly question to even have to ask. But if you build it onsite, are you putting wheels on it? Is it something you can haul away?
Yeah, I think the idea, look, wheels, I mean, that's, in terms of it being on chassis, I think that's always a possibility. Because at the end of the day, you're going to likely, like a C container, you're going to end up putting it on some sort of a, crane it off and then put it on some sort of apparatus that'll end up wheeling it off somewhere else.
Otherwise, it's just an ADU, isn't it? I mean-
One would argue that, sure. But I think the difference with the ADUs is they're meant to be permanent. They're not meant to be moved offsite, ever.
Okay, and this has that possibility.
The way in which they're being constructed, they're not necessarily being constructed to be there permanently, right? So there's some different, there's some different construction pieces that are in compliance with ANSI standards. So, and that's different than what the California-
That's different from the building standards code.
Correct.
And one last question. The compostable toilet, if that's sitting under the tiny house, is it-
You had a picture.
It could be on compacted dirt? And is that a problem?
There you go. Oh. There we go. What's that little insert there? It's covering up part of your picture.
Oh, the top right? That's Lucas.
I don't think that's-
Can you, I think you can, can you move it?
No, because this is-
I, okay.
Well, okay. That shows, that shows to me the floor of the movable tiny house is about four or five feet off the ground, if the tank is on the ground.
That looks like a basement she's under.
I think this is a compact version of what you would typically see if this was in a single-family residence. For a tiny house, I think you would even see more compact, meaning that if this was to be sited on a site, more than likely, you would need to start prepping for it. There would have to be some component where it would be dug down slightly in order to work. Simple as that. But I would assume it would only be for that particular area.
And does it require any kind of seating, any kind of something to put it on?
You mean like a pad?
A pad, concrete, something?
Or DG or-
So these are-
Gravel?
There, we don't have specs for whether it's required to have compacted gravel or dirt and then layers on top of that. There aren't specs for that. So it's just, it typically just sits on the surface as it lays. And the way in which these are designed, they're of a product that, I'm assuming, doesn't leak. Yes.
Oh. That tank there is closed? It's not open on the bottom so that you have percolation into the soil?
It's closed, yeah.
Okay.
So you'd have to have access to it?
You got to remove the compost somehow.
Yeah, I don't-
Well, I saw a little door there on the side.
This is just one of, I mean, this is an example, but there's several different models that we've, that Sarah's certainly been looking into. This is, this model was taken specifically, showed how the system itself worked. Because I, when I first, we were first talking about it, I was like, I need to see what this looks like. I have no idea what we're talking about here. It sounds like a wonderful idea when we're talking about it, but how does it function? Right. Because, and if we recall, there was a commissioner here that talked about it pretty extensively every time a project came up, so.
I do know composting has its own issues. It attracts lots of rodents, rats, fun stuff, bugs. Yeah, anyway.
Were you, were you digressed? Okay. John?
Yeah, I do have some questions. So just in general, does this count as an ADU, a tiny home?
Moving it out of ADUs would not have it count as an ADU. That would be the whole point of moving it out.
To add on to that, so it wouldn't be counted as an ADU, but guess what? We get to count it towards our annual progress report, our APR.
All right, okay, cool. So, because I'm just trying to figure out-
And so to even further answer your question, is the way in which this is written, is it's, being independent means that if you have an ADU onsite, you can also have a tiny house onsite. Not an either-or, which is what the ordinance had before.
Either-or is with ADUs and guest houses right now.
Correct.
Depending on what order you do them in, you may have both or you may only have one.
Now, those are comments, not questions, okay.
So I could have a primary house, I could have an ADU, I could have a junior ADU, and I can have a tiny home. Four.
Four.
And then I could do SB9 split and I could have another four.
No. No, your SB9 split is different, because once you do the SB9 split, two and two.
Two and two.
Period.
Max four.
And that is something that's recorded and that is something that's done. So going beyond that-
You have four on the first lot, you can't split.
So max four buildings where people can live on a single-family residence.
Or residential units, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Interesting. Okay, yeah, some more questions. So this is on, here, I'll kind of dig into this. On Exhibit 1, Alt-A, page 2 of 7, number 5, "Allow homeowners to lease rent foundations/pads to movable tiny homeowners." Just wondered how that works, especially if it's a dirt foundation.
I'll answer it.
Go ahead.
So think about how the SB9 functions, right? So it's a legal split done, I mean, obviously, we looked at the ordinance itself, it's not going to city council. Here, we're talking about a lease, where the lease draws out the area, the area is then identified as rentable, and then there's a reasonable rate of return that's provided on that. And that is not something that the city gets involved in. We identify the allowance for that, but we don't identify what the cost associated with that would be. That is really a private matter-
Okay.
-that's then discussed.
So, so just for point of clarity, so what this is basically saying is it's, you're allowing to lease rent foundations/pads, not the home itself, just the pad?
Correct. As it relates to the tiny houses, yes.
So you're basically, as a single-family homeowner or land, or if you have a home in a single-family residence or a single-family zoned area, you could have a rentable tiny home pad on your property?
Correct.
Okay.
So for instance-
So I can have a primary house, I can have an ADU, I can have a junior ADU, and I can have a pad that is rentable for a tiny house. And I don't have to build the tiny house. I can just have the pad that's rentable.
Yeah, so think about it, like you have somebody that comes into town and they're here for a year.
Right.
And they're in a tiny house that meets the standards.
Bring their own tiny house.
Right, so they stay there.
How do they get, how do they get this compostable toilet built into my pad if I have concrete?
Now, remember, that's not something that's in the code currently, but it's something we're discussing at the moment.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just throwing out.
If that was an option, then certainly they've got to go through the process, whatever that process ends up looking like-
Got it.
-regarding the compostable piece.
Now, another question. If I do have this pad that's for rent, I have to provide utility hookups to that pad, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I have to, I have to offer electricity to that pad, but I don't have to offer sewer?
And water.
And, yeah, electricity and water.
Electricity, water.
But no sewer? Right?
Yes.
That's, that's a suggestion I understand.
I know, I get it. I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
You're asking the right questions because you're forcing me into an answer. But it's an if scenario, an if-then scenario.
Okay. Another, I'm sorry, I got some more questions, if that's okay. Okay, sorry. This is Exhibit 1, Alt-A, page 4 of 7. Number 1, the proposed movable tiny house is licensed and registered with the California Department of Motor Vehicles, and then it says "if" on chassis. Does the California Department of Motor Vehicles license and register anything that is not on a chassis?
It's just for clarification, so, no.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Yeah.
So you don't even need to have that "if" on chassis, because everything that the Department of Motor Vehicles is going to license and register is going to have a chassis.
Here's, here's why, I think we had kind of a discussion like this last time, where it was the chassis versus on pad discussion.
Right.
Because both of them exist within the realm of this proposed ordinance, I think it's important to provide that clarity. I agree with you from a practical standpoint, why include it?
Yeah.
But from the simplicity standpoint, I would say include it.
So I agree. To the extent that we can write ordinances that any person can pick them up and understand them, that's the goal. So I think this little piece, even though, I agree, what you're saying is correct, right? For laypeople, it makes it easier for them to understand what the standards are that apply to them.
Okay, but if I have a movable tiny house that's not on a chassis, I don't know how I would do that, but let's say I do. Do I have to have it registered with the California Department of Motor Vehicles?
No, it's the trailer part that makes it required to register with the DMV. Yeah, and then, because there's the pre-manufactured ones that come, some of them are like flat-packed, where you can just build them onsite and they're not on a chassis.
Okay. I just, I'm confused by the language, because it says that it is, it's part of the, it says the tiny house should admit proof that it's part of- it's part of the, it says the tiny house shall submit proof that it's part of Section C, part of the application process.
Would it be helpful for you if in that first sentence, we put, shall submit proof of the following comma where applicable?
Yeah, it's almost like we need an if in here. If the proposed movable tiny home is licensed and registered in the state of California, you know, something like that. It needs to be on a chassis. It's just confusing to have that if on chassis piece at the very end. Just.
That makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
If, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, that's okay. Let's see. So, number six, in the same Exhibit One, Alt A, page four of seven. It says the proposed movable tiny house will be located on a permitted, permanent movable tiny house foundation, which may either be simultaneously permitted with the proposed movable tiny house, or previously permitted permanent movable tiny house foundation. I guess I just need to get clarity on what a movable tiny house foundation is. And I know we have it in Exhibit One, Alt A, page five of seven, but it doesn't mention anything about what it's constructed out of, and it also says that in page seven of five, permanent movable tiny house foundation requirements. On site, on site of the parcel of the primary unit, movable tiny house shall be mounted on a permitted, permanent foundation that meets the requirements of NFPA 225. So I guess.
National Fire Protection Association.
So there, there's a definition of movable tiny house foundation that puts more specifications around what it's referring to when we say those terms. So, it's a full poured concrete or masonry foundation, a floating slab for which the municipality may require an engineer's certification if it is to be placed on soil, or any other foundation which pursuant to the building code is permitted for other types of single-family dwelling or residential use, and is determined by the director and the building official to be safe and sufficient to support the proposed movable tiny house.
Yeah, that's, that's on page three, item fourteen.
Got it, okay. So that would be.
So it's a way to say all of those things all at one time by making it a definition.
Okay, now that makes sense.
Right, and it gets to, to Commissioner benefits, benefits points, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's good. Okay, cool. Let's see, what else? Oh, another question. Page four of seven, Exhibit One, Alt A. Under development features, it says the number of movable tiny houses allowed on site, and it says one. I guess my question is, what is site? Is that a lot?
Yes.
Yeah. I just didn't see any definitions of what a site is. I mean, and we make a lot of references.
Residential parcel?
Yeah, or a lot.
Yeah.
Is that?
We can clarify that.
Okay, that'd be good.
Cool.
It probably makes sense to use whatever language we've used elsewhere in the code for consistency purposes. Yeah.
Per lot.
Lot probably is the most, but we can look at what the, the more common term is that is used. Site, I don't think is used throughout the code.
Okay, cool. Uh, let's see, it's a utility, we talked about that, address, oh, movable tiny house may be given separate street addresses from primary unit. Question on parking, because it does say that, sorry, Exhibit One, Alt A, page four of seven. Parking movable tiny houses shall not require additional off-street parking. So it doesn't require, like, them to have parking, but they're not allowed to have off-street parking either. So the lot has to have parking just sufficient enough for a tiny home resident. Here's, okay, so, because what I, here's what I've envisioned, and this goes kind of to Jamie's point. And I kept envisioning this in my head, it's like, okay, let's say I have my primary unit, I got an ADU, I got a junior ADU, and then I got my tiny home lot. My tiny home lot or foundation, let's say it's dirt, let's say I don't have a driveway to that, it's just dirt. So now I got a car going in and out of dirt all the time. It's just going to be a mess. So I was just curious if we have anything to kind of prevent that.
Here's the amazing thing about this new section of the code that's being proposed. Unlike, being that it's, it's taken, it's apart from the ADU regulations that were, that were baked into it, this body as well as city council has the authority to provide additional language. If, if there's a need for additional parking, like for instance, providing one off-site space, it can be required here.
On, on-site or off-site?
On-site.
On-site.
On-site. Did I not, did I not clarify, on-site versus the off-site piece?
I like that. I like, I like having an extra on-site spot, because that would make sense. Because I know there's a lot of property, you know, in the air, in, in Ojai.
Will you pull the microphone closer?
I just know we have a lot of, there's a lot of, you know, single-family residences that are fairly large, and they could put a tiny home lot or a pad on their property. But if we don't specify how they get access to that tiny home, I could see it just like being right through their front yard or something. You know what I mean?
Well, the, what we could also clarify is there are parking standards. So for instance, our code basically, without saying you can't, you can't, you really can't park.
On your front yard.
Yeah, on your front yard.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have standards that basically say that.
Yeah.
Without saying it directly.
Got it, okay, cool. Oh, and then finally, I apologize, all these questions.
They haven't gotten to mine yet.
Right. Oh, boy. Exhibit One, Alt A, page five of seven, defensible space requirement. All movable tiny houses shall have a minimum of five feet defensible space surrounding movable tiny house. And I guess my question is, is this consistent with all of the other defensible spaces that we have in our code?
It's not.
It's not, because I felt we have some that are ten, right? Some that are five.
I think there was a standard we were looking at that was ten.
Yeah.
Right.
Ten between.
Between structures.
Between structures.
Between structures.
Yeah.
So, it's up for discussion. We had reduced that here, given that it could be rolled off-site at any point in time, but recognizing that if we're looking for consistency, then the ten, then the ten could be in terms of maintaining consistency throughout.
Well, I do like having a little bit, I like, I like the ten. The reason why is, obviously, fire is a big issue. We're having a big fire right now that's coming into Ventura County. So that hazard is not going away. It's only going to get worse, I feel, and Ojai is a prime candidate for having fires. And these tiny homes, a lot of them are built out of wood. You know, so they're matchsticks.
Yep, well, to be fair, they, they're being built out of materials that are.
Yeah, the roofs are good, yeah.
Well, the roofs, and I would even say the siding is, is good as well.
Ooh, that's.
That hardy plank.
Yeah, yeah.
Aspect, which is typical.
All right, cool.
Not required, but typical.
Other, a couple more questions, I apologize. I was looking through some other cities that have ordinances for tiny homes, and for example, like Santa Clara. Santa Clara specifically calls out that tiny homes cannot have aluminum siding, they can't have fiberglass siding. They can't be shipping containers or cargo containers. Do we have anything like that in our, I didn't see anything like that.
No, but we can add it if, if, if the commission feels so led as a majority to, to add specific parameters of that nature. Yeah.
Okay.
It's a question.
I, I mean, I.
I don't want to go any further, because that.
Yeah, we can, that's a discussion piece. Yeah, okay, cool. That's it. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I'd ask a few things to clarify right now, and then we'll get into details in the resolution later. If a parcel owner leases ground to a prospective MTS, MTH resident, the responsibility for utility hookups and the pad and all the rest is a private party transaction, correct? It's not something that the city gets in the middle of, but does require that things be done by someone, is that?
Correct, so for instance, hypothetical, this code moves forward, adopted by city council, and someone comes in and goes through our process, this new process. There's no limitation on the number per year, it's not a two-year pilot program, all this stuff. Instead, it lives in its own realm. And they, they get permits through the city.
Well, this becomes a permanent part of the code that's not a pilot program anymore.
Correct.
It's just something that's allowed in certain places.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hypothetical. Answering this, this question, by the way, not going into deliberation. I know, I'm sorry. So if, if this happens, it's also, just like we do with any single-family residence or ADU, they're required to also provide us with how they're going to be doing, you know, the sanitation, the water, they've got to provide us all will-serv letters, it's no different.
Yeah, okay. John sort of edged into the, the area of utility hookups other than sewer. And my question at this point is, are the water and electric utility hookups required to be undergrounded? I think that's part of the code.
Most certainly. Yes.
Is it in here? I, I didn't remember seeing it.
So.
Resilient, in this resolution, so I just assumed it was part of the overall code that applies to all new residential units.
Now, there's two ways in which that can be addressed, to answer your question.
Okay.
The code, the code as a whole applies to, even to this, so if we're missing something, or we didn't reference something correctly, that doesn't mean that we, that when someone comes in and we get to, they get to discount, oh, it's not included in this section, no, no, no. The code is applied as a whole. Now, from clarification purposes, if it's important to add that into here, can certainly be done.
Yeah, okay.
So is it, it's.
Undergrounding of utilities is still a requirement for a movable tiny house.
Absolutely, yes.
All right. The last I heard, and this was when the previously referenced but unnamed commissioner talked about compostable toilets all the time. It was my understanding that the Ventura County Environmental Health Division said no to provision of compostable toilets for residential units anywhere in the county. Has that changed?
So, we've done some research to, to see if there's anything out there for Ventura County, or even for the state of California. What we're finding is, for instance, up north, there are parameters and standards that have really kind of been established.
Does Ventura County have standards?
I'm not seeing anything specifically in terms of standards for Ventura County specifically, like in terms of environmental.
Have you heard of the Environmental Health Division of the county government ever approving a compostable toilet? I'm not saying one might have been put in that wasn't permitted, but has EHD ever said yes if a question was asked?
So just doing the general research, we're not finding it, however, because we like to do the deeper dive in terms of research, we've sent out a request to environmental, and so we're waiting for response.
Okay, we haven't, we haven't yet established whether EHD would approve a compostable toilet.
Right, right. At least for Ventura County.
And something that we're going to continue to look into is whether this is a space where the county has authority over the city to say one way or the other. Right, so.
Okay.
From, from an environmental health standpoint, typically the regulations for restaurants and sanitation to that aspect apply, so we will continue to look into that part of it, of whether this is a space the city is able to regulate, because we're able to write our own laws for health and sanitation.
Okay. But at, at this time.
There's no ordinance on the books for the county that prohibits compostable toilets, except for RVs in an emergency situation. We searched their code earlier today.
Okay.
So, at best, it's a gray area where there may be an opportunity for the city to regulate here. But as Lucas said, we're clarifying with the county to see what their position is, to make sure that we have all of the information.
Okay. Compostable toilets not part of the currently proposed ordinance, though, correct? They are not.
Correct.
Okay, so we would have to actively add that as an alternative.
Yes.
And we're not yet sure whether we can do that. Would that be fair?
So according to Matt, the city can add compostable toilets at will, when I was speaking.
According to?
Matt, the city attorney. So, in the city attorney. Yes, so if that's helpful, the city attorney is of the opinion that you can add compostable toilets if you'd like them to. But, as Lucas said, being a good partner with the county, making sure that they're comfortable with it.
It's checks and balances, I think, to a certain degree. I mean, obviously, the attorney's identifying that, that it's at will. But ask me what the standards look like, and I don't have an answer, which is actually similar, if I was to make a nexus between the two. Think about gray water. Anytime that we talk about gray water, it's like, hey, are you going to add grade water? Well, we're not required to, but we'll look into it, and every system that we've seen, it's like a snowflake, no two are alike.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think there's any standards for gray water either. Okay, just one other at the moment. Well, this is, this is actually in the, in the resolution itself, but in Exhibit One to Attachment A, that's the resolution. The first recital and Exhibit One, page three, item fifteen, they both define a movable tiny house as providing complete independent living quarters for one household. That's the language that's in the packet. Okay, but page six, item, it's, it's in the proposed ordinance, ten to seventeen twelve H. I'm sorry. Yes, ten, ten to seventeen twelve H, addresses multifamily dwelling movable tiny houses. That's the language that's in there. And so, I'm, I am confused by what looks to me like an internal inconsistency. If the intent is to allow the same sort of movable tiny house on a multifamily parcel as is allowed on a single-family parcel, and I think that's the intent, then that Section H should be called movable tiny houses on multifamily parcels, not multifamily dwelling MTHs.
Yeah, I like that.
On the other hand, if the intent is to allow single-family and multifamily movable tiny houses, although multifamily sounds kind of crowded, then, then we need different wording. And I don't know what the intent was here.
So, I don't know that I can necessarily answer that question without going into deliberation.
Okay.
On it, so can we, can we hold off on that one?
Sure.
For the, but, so remember, I'll remember to bring that one back, because I think there's some different layers in which we can unpack for that, and then kind of give, give this body some breadth in which to, to discuss whether, whether it makes sense.
Okay.
In that context. Remember, these, the, I don't want to get into, I feel like we're having deliberation at that. We'll talk about it when we get into deliberation.
Your questions are so thorough.
He's got, he's got good questions.
All of you.
All right. Yeah, there will be more questions.
Yeah, I, I have one more, I apologize, actually, two more. In, in doing your research, are there any other cities in California with the tiny home ordinance that allow for combustible toilets or septic tanks not hooked up to utility sewers?
That is not something I looked into, but I think that would be something good to look into.
Yeah, for sure.
There is one city that I'm aware of, which is San Francisco.
San Francisco, that's a big city. Are there any, and that brings me to the next question, are there any cities in Ventura County that have a tiny home ordinance?
Ventura County, I think we're the only one.
We're the only one.
I don't think that there's another one that, that has it on the books yet.
Okay, and I would also probably, well, third question, are there any cities in California of our, the same size that have a tiny home ordinance?
Not that we've found.
You're narrowing the context, and I can think of several, but they're not even close to the same size.
The smallest one I saw was St. Louis, Abyspo. Yeah, which is pretty big.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if we haven't worn out staff with questions, then let's um let's open the public comment portion. Oh, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
That's right. The um on page four of seven, Exhibit One to Attachment A. There are there's a grid at the bottom says development features and requirements. Uh, what is the source of that um grid on Exhibit Eight to Attachment? Exhibit One to Attachment A, Page Four of Seven. The last box on that grid on that page says mechanical equipment. Is that a is there a?
So really what that boils down to is any any heaters, any A C units, all that stuff is to be confined. Basically, under and within the roof itself, not on top.
Right, actually, it is that specific one, and I was not thinking about something sitting on top, but. Um, there's been a lot of activity in um mechanical systems. Split HVAC systems where there's a unit that sits um at ground level. Next to the building and uh it is connected to the building. By um tubes that have coolant and and heating. Fluids uh that are not so that are not contained in the in the building and are not. Put on the roof of the building or attach to the wall of the building, but sit on the floor as a sit on the ground next to a building.
But this this requirement is that the air conditioning compressor be within the structure.
Right.
Rather than next to the structure or on top.
Right.
Right, and I'm saying.
Okay.
That commercially now, there there's a lot of activity in this area. And the compressor, whether it's used for heating or air conditioning. Is something that sits immediately next to the building on the ground.
And this would not allow that.
Right. Is there a reason? The reason I ask for where does this come from is? Is there reasoning for for that? Because of all the elements you might want to place outside the building, it would be that little.
Absolutely.
Sounds like deliberation, but I will I will more I will be more than happy to answer and and certainly encourage the conversation. When we go into deliberation.
Okay, let's open the public comment portion of this public hearing. Is there anyone here present? Who wishes to speak? I have one speaker card, Larry Steingold.
I think tiny homes are Larry Steingold. Oh, hi. I think tiny homes are a wonderful addition to help the affordability. Mesa looks to be like tiny homes without wheels, so maybe that's what they're talking about for multifamily. But Santa Rosa, Truckee, Lakeport, Nevada City, Harold'sburg, and Sonora have these. Chat G P T is wonderful. But that's what that says. Uh, but it just seems to me that these are just. This is a workaround to just, why don't we just permit mobile homes to be parked in somebody's backyard? Because that's what they are. They're nice mobile homes without aluminum siding or covered over with texture one eleven or whatever. But that's what they are, and that's the cheapest way to get people in is to just, this is all very nice, but just tell people, hey. You want to have a tiny home in your backyard? It's a trailer, it's an R V. All utilities have to be underground. Whether you submeter them or not, that's your problem. That's your choice. Um, but that's what it is, and to not have a deck and to step a foot off the ground, you're gonna need steps. To have air conditioning, you're gonna need compressors or it's gonna be a split system, but that's what they are. This is a mobile home. Okay, so why not just allow it? It's a mobile home. It's a a residential mobile home park. So can't we just cut through all this? Because that's what the city council wants is an inexpensive way. So we have R Vs parked all over the place in town. All right, they can just pull them out to somebody's property and plug them in. Isn't that what they're looking to do? A workaround, because that's what it certainly seems like. So why don't we just call it what it is? If you want to have a junior A D U, you want to have a second home, or you can have a mobile home on your park. It's got to go in the backyard. The fire station, fire engine has to be able to get to it. That should be one of the requirements. And the lease has to have right of pass to repass and access, because leasing a pad without access doesn't do much. And this is like the caravan hotel. But that's essentially what it is, is what it seems like to me, even though you want them nice to want them to look like homes. They want them to look like that, but these are all temporary. Right? That's the whole point. You plug them in, you move them. And a cement pad really should be required, because when it rains around here, since we've been here. When you have these deludges, D G and dirt, just sort of goes and moves. So I would just an earthquake, I mean, I would suggest concrete be required, a solid pad. And underground utilities and for all water, gas, electric, sewer. But there's got to be access and off-street parking, and that's my take on it. But that's, so have fun.
Thank you, Larry.
The compostable toilet thing, that's just saying, hey, who's gonna take care of it? The tenant?
Thank you, Larry. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item? Sherry, anyone with their hand raised?
No.
All right, then we're going to close the public comment portion of this public hearing. And come back to discussion and deliberation by the commission. Can we start in on some more of these things now? I'm I'm still curious about the single family versus multifamily movable tiny houses. Because I saw that a movable tiny house could be four hundred and forty square feet.
Yep, so.
I don't know how you get, what's that, a a an eight-foot by fifty-foot trailer?
Typically, ten.
Or thereabouts.
Yeah, thereabouts. So here's.
Eight by fifty-five feet.
Here's the reason why that was added um and included as a part of this proposal is. So the A D U law allows for this standard as it exists. When we've taken this out of A D U law and put it in its own standard, we, you know, Sarah and I took a close, staff and I took a close look at this. And when we were looking at this as a standard, we recognized that for multifamily, which is not common, but possible. There's an opportunity where these sites are already compact in terms of how they try to find solutions to additional. Units. Allowing for these additional pads times two, basically doubling what would be allowed for multifamily seemed appropriate, given the context. However. That then is, looking at it a little bit closer, that then is allowing for A D Us. To be doubled within multifamily areas as well as tiny houses being doubled within multifamily. Well, it's a compact, yeah, it's compacting it by four versus saying, oh, in single family. It's to the the tune of four, where with multifamily, it's to the tune of. Two A D Us potential as well as two tiny houses potential. The crowding aspect was brought up as as a potential.
That's in addition to the apartment building or whatever the multifamily dwelling is.
A D Us have a slightly different standard. They can use utility areas or areas that are just un- unused. For storage or for whatever purposes can be converted. That's not the case here with tiny houses. Instead, it would be on chassis or on slab. So. Two does feel, and I get the sense that that two is probably excessive from a multifamily standpoint. Removing that piece. Um, probably begins to solve some of the potential concerns in the crowding that could come with. Um, these tiny houses, especially for multifamily. While it's it's not common. Working through how the two and two would work, I think it adds a bit of complexity to it. So. I'm thinking, look, I'm thinking of the totality of the code as it exists, right? So I'm not only just thinking about what these tiny houses would do, but what we already have in the code as it relates to A D Us. So A D Us for multifamily, in which that code reads, multifamily is allowed to have up to two onsite.
Right.
Here, we're identifying up to two for multifamily as well. So it's to the tune of.
That that was not my question.
I know, but I'm I'm looking at it from a bigger picture standpoint, and the concern that I'm seeing. Um, with this is it's to the tune of four, not just the tune of two. You're thinking of two in terms of two pads, two um two tiny houses.
I was thinking of, is a movable tiny house? A single family residential unit or is it a multifamily residential unit?
I don't think.
If it can be either one.
It's an accessory structure. It's accessory to the primary, so it'd be accessory.
But it's still a residential unit, correct?
Correct.
Okay, but if, okay. If the intent is to allow single family and multifamily movable tiny houses. Because ten, two, seven, twelve, seventeen, H two, A specifically mentions each detached. Multifamily movable tiny house. It seems to assume that there could be multifamily movable tiny houses.
So what I would recommend for this part of the code is striking that sub-two altogether. Because when I read both of those paragraphs, I thought that they were redundant. The second paragraph really describes what's allowed by the chart. The first paragraph. Is really saying, the standards in this section that we're applying to single family residences. Can be extended to a multifamily property under these conditions.
I'm not talking about single family or multifamily properties. I'm talking about the movable tiny house itself. Is it a single family or a multifamily residential unit?
It's an accessory structure, so I think what this section is trying to say. Is that the the tiny homes are okay at multiple multiple family dwelling sites.
I I I would not argue that point. I am trying to understand what is a movable tiny house. Is it because? Item fifteen on Page Three of Exhibit One says. It provides complete independent living quarters for one household. And yet elsewhere, we talk about multifamily movable tiny houses.
I think that the way the language that in that section is worded is jumbled. And needs to be corrected, because it's not, when I read it, I didn't think it was clear, where it made it sound like. The tiny home itself was a multifamily residence. I don't believe that that's what Lucas was intending. What I think that they were trying to say was. At a site that has an apartment building, you know, we'll make it easier. So a site multifamily apartment building, you can also have tiny homes at that site. But the limit is two for that property.
That's H one, and that's quite clear.
So I think H two. Is saying the same thing, and it's reiterating what's in the chart in Table A. Where it's superfluous. We don't need it. We can just, I think, move the language a li- around a little bit. In H one to say all the requirements under this section apply equally to movable tiny houses. Sided with a multifamily primary unit unless stated otherwise in the subsection. The owner of a multifamily site or property may build no more than two movable tiny houses in compliance with this section. In a la- in any allowed zone and for any property for which a tiny, which a movable tiny house is permitted by Table A. In subsection D.
That's H one. That's very clear.
Strike the rest of it. Strike the rest of H. I I think this conversation in and of itself proves to me that I was like, oh, this is. The way this is worded is a little confusing. But it the the standards that are written here is it just is reiterating what's in the chart. Nothing in, I double checked it. Nothing in that paragraph is different for a multifamily unit. The only difference is if you have a multifamily property, you get two instead of one. Right, Lucas?
Understand that.
I liked it. Can I can I just ask, can I read the first sentence of H one? To the group? And see, I just want to get a temperature of, because I. I'm reading it myself and I'm, I I'm, I think I know what Chair Quillis is getting at. So it says, all the requirements under this section apply equally to multifamily dwelling movable tiny houses. Unless stated otherwise in the subsection. So a multifamily dwelling movable tiny house is.
Who knows?
Well, that's, I think that's.
Apply equally to movable tiny houses on multifamily.
Yeah.
Parcels, residential parcels.
Yeah.
Then I would understand just what it means.
Multifamily site lot or property. You have it in the second sentence.
Yes, that's what I meant to say. Can you read that section?
Read it.
You did?
That's what I was reading.
Oh, read.
If I may, what I read out loud, if you can see, striking out the lang- what?
Yeah, there you go.
Striking out the language in the first sentence, so we're gonna move multifamily dwelling. And put it after movable tiny houses, because I think what your concern is. When move multifamily dwelling is before.
Yeah.
Movable tiny houses, it modifies it to mean that the movable tiny home.
Becomes a multifamily.
And that's not what we're saying. Right? So if we move the language to after and it it's, yeah.
If if H is titled movable tiny houses on multifamily dwelling parcels.
Perfect. We can make.
Then.
Yes.
Then I understand what that means.
Yeah.
That was what was intended.
Okay.
But it's fixable.
That's good.
Yes.
Let's write it the way it was intended.
Um, and Lucas, I do like the idea of limiting it to one. Density.
I I agree.
And and just for clarity, for a multifamily lot, site, property, whatever we're calling it. They're allowed two A D Us, right? So yeah, five apartment, five at apartment, I can get two A D Us. Can I get two junior A D Us too? Just two A D Us. Do I get one junior A D U? Okay, and then I can have one tiny home.
So wait a minute.
Here's the thing.
Tiny home?
I think you, I think we would need a consensus of the commission before making that change.
What I heard earlier.
So the what the proposed ordinance says right now is two.
Two what?
Two tiny homes on a multifamily property.
Independent of whatever, anything else that's built there.
Correct.
Okay.
If the commission so desires, majority of you, that you could change that requirement and give staff that feedback. To go to one only.
I'm just thinking of the apartments in town. If you know them, there's not many.
There's no room.
That's 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 a local condition. It's not part, it's not necessarily part of the law. But the question of how many residential units can you have on a multifamily parcel? Should be clear somewhere. And I think the number is however many apartments you have in the multifamily primary building. Plus two A D Us, plus two movable tiny houses.
And one junior.
And one junior A D U?
Yes. Yes.
Where is that?
So the junior A D U would be have would have to be housed within. So the it gets to the the same idea with the A D Us, where you end up using some some space that's underutilized. Period.
So there would be.
The junior A D U is a carve-out of one of the primary residence units?
I mean, that that could potentially be one of the. I mean, that, that could potentially be one of the options, yes. He could turn a two, a two-bedroom, one ba-. He could potentially turn, there's a lot of different scenarios in which that could play out. Just to be clear, we've seen none of them in this city at this point. But that's not to say that that isn't, hasn't been happening in other cities that I've been hearing about, so. That is a possibility, though.
If you have a church lot that wants to put up m- empty Hs, is there a limit for them?
Churches are handled, handled differently. Remember, we, we took the, the zoning component out of that, because now there's an assembly bill or a saint, senate bill, that addresses that independent of this.
It, it doesn't have to go into a.
It applies to residential zonants, OSA and VMU.
Yep, they've got.
Or PL.
Yeah, PL has their own way in which to address it, and that's been addressed.
Staff anticipate that we're going to incorporate the inclusion of PL in the mobile, movable tiny house ordinance?
Now, remember, we, we talked about this back in December, and in February, put it to bed by saying, no, it's already been addressed through senate biller. I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but. SP four, thank you. So SP four, actually, Sarah and I went to a, a seminar about four months ago, and had a pretty intensive um discussion, where we just did listening. Um, where they talked about how these could be cited on those areas, and it really almost entirely circumvents our, our standards. So.
Okay.
I don't wanna get into that discussion, because it is, it's something we've already talked about, and it's the reason why we took PL out altogether.
Okay, well, I, I think we'd all agree that one of our goals here is to make whatever goes into the code clear, and unambiguous, and understandable to someone who comes to the front desk, and says, I wanna build X, what limits are there on me for doing that?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Agreed.
But, so if I have, if I have a, a des- I have a lot, and I wanna put up, uh, let's say half a dozen apartments on it, in one building, then I'm allowed with this proposed ordinance, oh no, with other parts of the code, I'm already allowed two ADUs in addition to that apartment building. Okay, and under this proposed ordinance, I would also be allowed two movable tiny houses, somewhere, but subject to what limitations? Uh, do we have, lot, lot coverage is in here, I think? Site coverage not to exceed percentage set forth by permitted zone, okay. So the R-zone or, or, or whatever, okay.
OSA, VMU. It's got setbacks in there too.
So movable tiny houses are, are going to be by this, they're gonna be legal on ag land.
Correct.
Okay.
ADUs are legal on ag land as well.
And in open space?
I had to look at os- open space to see if that's true, I think it is true, though.
Well, it's right here, it says OS. In the table.
I thought you said ADUs, not tiny houses.
No, uh, tiny houses are gonna be allowed in open space.
Yes, that's what's identified here, all R-zones, OSA and VMU.
What is A?
A is ag, agriculture.
Oh, agriculture.
Of which, you can, you can count the number of parcels in town on one hand. Probably without most of the fingers.
How many open spaces do we have?
It's more than, more than.
Yeah, open space? There's open space? You, oh, you mean like?
Sorry, there's, yeah, open space zones. By the way, in your, we always have in the packets, the zoning, is it the zoning?
No, not in this one.
Of course, the one time that I wanted to.
The preserve on highway thirty-three is open space?
Yes, to the west, yeah.
Okay.
And then there's some open space to the north, um, where it's then shared with ag too. So it kind of interchanges.
And part of the city incorporates part of the national forest, I think.
That's to the north, yeah.
Okay, um, just some errata. In the resolution, this is exhibit one to attachment A, first page. The, um. Okay, so first of all, the first recital where it says independent living quarters for one household, we're all agreed, that's the real rule. It's not, that we're not gonna have any multifamily movable tiny houses.
Correct.
Okay, on the second one, second lo- second recital, second line, cited with a C should be cited with an S.
And on the first recital, I would recommend a change from quarters to area, to make it consistent with the definitions in the ordinance itself. Cause living quarters, there's no definition, living area, there is a definition.
Is that definition right in here?
Yes, it should be.
Living area. Okay, yep, I like that.
Okay.
It, so it provides a complete living area.
Complete independent living area for one household.
Okay.
And then.
That sounds good.
Technical correction noted.
B fourteen, and I thought B fourteen was very good, but I didn't see where it allowed dirt. Or a floating slab, if it's placed on soil.
Right.
Or any other foundation which the director and the building official agreed is okay, but that could be dirt.
Dirt is mentioned in table A, under permanent movable tiny house foundation requirements, in the second, uh, it's not a bullet, the second hash.
Yeah.
About the.
Compacted material surface, gravel or dirt.
Yes, that's the only time the word dirt is used in this ordinance.
Right, soil, soil is used in item fourteen on page three.
For the movable tiny house foundation.
I, uh, sub-item two there, a floating slab, if it is to be placed on soil. Now, that I don't object to, because the floating slab is not soil. It's gonna be concrete or, I guess, concrete, right?
More, more than likely concrete, you could, I mean.
Are, is there some other kind of floating slab?
Well, I'm thinking of, um, uh, I'm sorry, I'm losing my, my train of thought here. It's, it's, it would typically be like what used to be built, which is like, I, I don't wanna call it a floating slab, cause that's not really what it is at this. Raised foundation, thank you. That would be another option.
Grade foundation, yeah, okay.
Raised foundation.
Raised fa-.
You know homes that are built on raised foundations?
Yeah, pier and beam or whatever. Yeah, and, and in all those cases, then, there's no wood touching the ground, not touching the soil. There's concrete. Or a foundation.
Typically footings, that go right into the dirt, and then the.
And then a. The perimeter is a solid foundation. Okay, but I, I, I'm not crazy about if it's placed on s- well, okay. Where was, where was the other, was gravel or dirt?
Yeah, the, the dirt component, if the commission has a little bit of an issue with the dirt, is what I'm sa- is what I'm hearing. Maybe in that case, you, you identify only for those that are on chassis. By doing that, you're taking away any of that placing a, placing a tiny house. Right, requires the chassis, if on dirt.
Where, where, where is that?
And right now, it doesn't specify that.
So in table A, let me see, there's no page number.
Yeah, this is page five, it's still part of table A.
Yeah, it looks like. It's at the, it's a couple lines up on permanent movable tiny house foundation requirements. Second bullet, it's the fourth line from the bottom, in parentheses.
Gravel or dirt.
So the commission wants gravel or dirt. Only for chassis.
And, and is that?
Only for movable tiny home.
And this aligns with fourteen. May include full poured concrete, floating slab.
See, fourteen sub-three is a catch-all. It says whatever the CDD and the CBO decide is okay.
Yeah.
So what I think, in this sentence, so that it reads a little bit cleaner. We could say.
You're on page five now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Gravel or dirt shall be permitted only for those movable tiny houses on a chassis, does that work for the commission?
Yeah, now.
Yeah, but what if they remove the wheels from the chassis?
Well, it's still on the chassis, still on a metal chassis.
Sure, but it's sitting on the ground.
But it's still three feet up, right? Oh, okay, take the wheels, okay.
On a chassis with wheels, then?
With wheels.
Any objection? Okay.
Got it. In the next, in the next line, it says secured to prevent movement, you see that? Could you just tell me how?
How's a movable house secured without movement?
What that means? How do you secure it other than take the wheels off?
There's ways in which you can anchor it down.
Oh, yeah, I got you.
You level it like you would, for lack of a better term, an RV or a trailer, and then there's ways in which you can secure it to the ground, so it's not, it's not moving at that point. So it's level, and then it's not shifting. It's more than just putting wheel stops, it's actually like.
Bolting it somehow.
Bolting it, basically. Not to be meant, not to meant to be permanent by any stretch of the imagination, but to secure it to the site.
We're talking earthquakes now, right?
Wait, I'm, I'm confused, so.
Uh, I wouldn't say, look, I, the earthquake piece is a different, it's a different beast for permanent structure. And that's not what we're talking about.
So I'm, I'm confused.
I, I see what you're getting at, though, I appreciate it.
On this. Play hob with those utility hookups, though, if it moves.
Yes, yes, you don't want it to move.
Okay, so I guess I'm confused. On this, where we're talking about the permanent movable tiny house foundation requirements, we have these subsections, or little asterisks, or whatever they're called. So one of them, the first one, says if wheels are removed. The second one says if the movable tiny house does not have its wheels removed. So there's two different situations where we have two different foundation requirements. One with wheels removed, one without wheels removed. The one without wheels removed, two, already states that it can be on gravel or dirt.
Got wheels.
Right, yeah.
That's a good point.
You read the whole sentence.
I know, not amazing.
We were just, we were so focused on gravel and dirt. And fixing it.
If we.
No, that's an excellent point, so we don't have to make the change then. Are we, go back to gravel and dirt in parentheses is okay?
Okay, as long as the number one, if, if wheels are removed, so that the tiny house sits directly on the permanent foundation, the foundation shall follow the state-approved requirements for foundation systems for manufactured housing. It's gonna be a slab.
Slab.
We could, we could do the opposite. And put gravel and dirt shall not be permitted, if you want that clarity, in the first.
Yeah, you could put that.
Okay.
For clarity.
Now, so we have two instances here, if the wheels are removed, and if the wheels are not removed. If something is built on site, is it going to be built with wheels on site?
There we go, is it, is it movable?
I don't know. Lucas mentioned a crane earlier, and I agree, that may be necessary even if it's on wheels, because you can't get around the house to put something in, in the backyard. But if something is built on site, is it going to be built as a movable tiny house, licensed by the DMV and all that other yada yada?
I believe that that would be up to the applicant.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I don't see where it's.
If it is not, then is it a movable tiny house? Because the movable tiny house elsewhere is described as something that's licensed by the DMV, so.
If on chassis.
But you're, but the distinction that you're making.
On a chassis, is it a movable tiny house? Or is it some other new part of the, of the municipal code?
No, it's still a tiny house, because it's still built to ANSI standards. Your, both of those still fit within the parameters of a tiny house, because both of those, neither one of these are being inspected by, by building. Both of them are being inspected by a third party.
Right, I understand that.
So that's why you're confusing the issue of if it's on chassis, it must be an only, well, I guess to a certain degree, only a tiny house. And that's, that statement is true up to the chassis point, but there's also the option for it being cited, and still being built to the ANSI standards. We're build, we're, our building official inspector are not, are not going out and doing the inspections. Instead, it's, it's done by a state-certified.
If, if it's built to the ANSI standards, does it still have to be movable?
Well, at that point, so here's.
I'm sorry.
It's still considered movable, meaning it has the capabilities to be relocated.
Anything can be relocated.
Well, not anything.
Regular houses go down the highway, but.
Right.
I, I would call your attention to page three, paragraph C at the bottom, application. In addition to all this other stuff, an applicant for a movable tiny house shall submit proof that. And on to the next one, next top of page four.
Number one.
It is licensed and registered with the California Department of Motor Vehicles.
That's that way we were talking about.
If on chassis.
Yeah, that's that, that's where we need to get clarity, does it have to be registered with the Department of Motor Vehicles, or no?
If it is not on chassis, it sounds like not.
No, and we added, we added language.
So we're just talking about a box now?
Yes, we added language to that section.
An ANSI box.
To clarify.
Well, the difference between an ANSI box and a, and an ANSI box that's on a chassis is still an ANSI box.
Yeah.
Right, just one has wheels and one doesn't. But to be fair, both are brought to the site by wheels, one remains with wheels and one does not.
And the difference. Or it may be built on site with all of the pieces hauled separately to the site and assembled there.
Like an erector set, yes.
Okay.
Manufactured house.
In, in, like a manu- well, like a stick-built house, but to different standards.
Yeah, to the ANSI standards.
The ANSI standards.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still getting to the point where it's ANSI standards, that's the critical piece.
So determine it, so the difference between an ADU and a tiny home is the tiny home is ANSI, built to ANSI standards.
Correct.
Yeah.
Would it, would it help to just call them tiny homes?
Oh, let's not go there, tiny homes.
I didn't, I didn't.
Another special phrase.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to trigger you.
No, 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 no.
It seems like movable, movable was the issue, like the distinction of movable.
Well, it, it appears everywhere in immediate proximity to tiny house in this ordinance.
Sure.
And unless we're gonna change that, which might be a whole different kettle of fish.
Well, I don't, I didn't, let's keep the fish in the kettle, then. I just wanted to make sure we were addressing your concern, but I didn't realize that I stepped in it, so.
No, not, not at all, but, well, so. I spent a lot of years reading government contracts, and I wanna make sure it's right.
Yes.
On the table, oh, first of all, on the table, this is on page four now, it has a maximum floor area, there is no listing for minimum, minimum of a hundred and fifty is somewhere else.
Minimum, yes, minimum of a hundred and fifty is in the definitions.
It's in fifteen D on page three.
If the commission, if there's no objection, we can add a line for minimum, so that it's clear.
And, and then, then I go back on page three to item eleven. Where it says, living area means the interior legally permitted habitable area, minimum dimensions of eight by ten feet. With at least seven and a half feet of headroom. I don't see how we get to the minimum hundred and fifty square feet.
So, it's, it's like a minimum lot size. If you actually look at the minimum dimensions for a lot. And you, you run those numbers, what happens is. The square footage won't be met from a minimum standpoint, so you have to apply all three. So it has to meet the minimum width, length, and the square footage. So it has to be at least eight feet wide, it has to be at least ten feet long, it has to be at least a hundred and fifty square feet. So you combine all three of those. That's when you end up getting either a longer structure or a slightly wider structure that still fits within the, um, highway. Lines, basically, for a lane. So, I, I get what you're saying, but those are meant to be minimum, so you combine all three to get to. To the minimum standards.
Alright. Seventeen twelve seventeen H. Okay, we fixed a lot of twelve seventeen H already, right? We took out two and we just left one, so we don't need the number one even. On page six.
Yep, page six.
Now, back to table A, page four. Number of movable tiny houses allowed on site. It says one. I think it should say one on a single family parcel.
Yeah, we talked about that.
And up to two on a multi-family parcel or lot. Okay. One or two, okay? Twelve seventeen E. That's on page six. Uh, it says utilities may charge fees as allowed by state law. And, and I agree that the city does not assess connection fees, capacity charges. School district fees or similar impact fees. None of those apply to a city. In any case. But utilities and school districts and other public entities may charge fees. As allowed by law. And I would suggest we expand that wording right there.
Okay. Yeah, I, I see no issues with that. I think what the important piece to, to note is that the city is not collecting those fees. We're doing a, a checks and balances to ensure that that's been done before we release, but that's.
Right.
Those fees are up to, to each of those.
Okay, so the first sentence could say, no connection fees, et cetera, et cetera, will be assessed by the city. But the city will require that fees charged by. Utilities, school districts, and other public entities as allowed by law be paid. Prior to. Allowing a building permit or whatever the proper phrase is.
Yeah, we, look, the reality is, is we require proof of payment as a part of that. I mean, there's the.
And that's elsewhere in the code and it applies?
It is, so remember, it's the, it's the sum of the whole.
Okay.
So we're not requiring the undergrounding piece, but that's already a requirement.
I do, I do wanna compliment staff on putting together quite a comprehensive thing here. Uh, particularly the definitions. And the table A, we've made some minor changes to it, but only minor changes. And it has a lot more detail than I recall seeing in other parts of the code. Applied to other kinds of residential dwellings, and I compliment you on being as thorough as you are on this.
Did we already de- decide to change it to requiring an onsite parking space?
I think we did.
We talked about that early on, but I don't know if we talked about it during the discussion.
It was during the, the question portion, but there wasn't, hasn't been any deliberation on it.
In, in the table, the, the line for parking, I would, I would suggest. We say movable tiny houses shall require one additional off-street parking space. Was that, was that the intent of the commissioners?
Yes.
There was, there was somewhere else that it talked about short-term rental.
Yeah, it's on the very back.
The last, it's the last, uh, section of the ordinance.
Seven. It said there, any period of time less than three calendar months. Whereas the regular STR ordinance says one calendar month.
Yeah, this was, this is a mistake about the time when this was first written. I think it was up in the air. It was gonna be extended to three months, and then that never happened.
Okay, can we change that back to less than one calendar month then?
Yeah.
Good catch.
I just remembered it was in there somewhere. Okay. I think, I think you've answered all my questions. Thank you very much.
Um, I have a couple more I've noticed.
Of course you do.
We, we should go, we should keep at this until we all agree that we've got it right.
No, totally. Um, exhibit one, alt A, page six of seven. Um, A, mobile homes, except those fitting definitions of section da-da-da, and health and safety code. And travel trailers shall not be permitted. Okay, that's good. Now what about, um, a class ARV?
I think that actually fits within the, the section eighteen oh, uh, double oh seven of the health and safety code. I took a look at that section, and it's actually covering, it covers mobile homes and travel trailers, but I think. Oh wait, accepting those fitting the definition of eighteen double oh seven. So, to your point, maybe it does make sense to include that.
Yeah.
It's manufactured homes.
Yeah.
That section.
Eighteen double oh seven, manufactured, okay.
Except fitting, okay, yeah. I, I mean, I'm just, yeah, does it include like cast, class C trailers, I mean, class. Class CRVs, class ARVs, you know, is that considered? Or, or should we put in something like, you know, shall not move under its own power, something like that?
But the, the, the point of, of that, that line item there is that. Travel trailers are, are, they are not allowed as a semi-permanent residence.
Yeah, as a tiny home, under this definition. They're not defined as a tiny home in this, a movable tiny home.
Oh, sh- maybe we should just say shall not be, shall not be permitted under this section. Then, then, then they don't get counted as movable tiny homes.
Yeah, and then I think we should add shall not move under its own power.
Okay.
Or, yes, add that somewhere.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you, I was checking to see if there was somewhere else in the code that it appeared. And there's not, so could you clarify what the, the correction is that you want?
Oh, I just, I want something, an, an addition saying that, um, it will. Movable tiny home will not be, shall not move under its own power, meaning it doesn't have an engine and can't be driven.
Yeah, the way in which I've had, I have it kind of rewritten is mobile homes, except those fitting the definition of section eighteen double oh seven. Of the health and safety code and travel trailers shall not be permitted under this section and not move under its own power.
Oh, okay, there you go, yeah. Cool, so that'll, that'll cut out travel trailers, RVs.
Yeah.
Good, okay, perfect. Uh, let's see. Did we wanna talk about the, um, condenser, the AC unit?
There, there it says, all applicable regulations and municipal codes shall be met. So that, that covers the rest of this, good.
Um, did we wanna talk about the ACs, the condensers off?
Yeah, how do you do that? This is back to.
This is back to.
Bottom.
The last line of the table A.
Mechanical equipment. Yeah, 'cause like, where are you gonna put an AC if you can't put it on the roof, or if you can't put it on the side of it?
So the amazing thing, and this gets to, I think, what Commissioner Bennett was asking about earlier. And that is. If you've been a part of or have been in one of these, you'll find that they are ho- like, probably the most efficient. Use of space and overlapping of space that you will oversee. And on top of that, the, like, um, water heaters, condensers, uh, split units. The whole thing, there, it's typically in a smaller, more compact, um, setting. And is then hidden.
You're only heating or cooling a small space.
Yeah, because of the, yeah, and that's the other thing, is because the size of the space is so small. It doesn't take as much, um, power to, to keep those, those running. Um, so, if you're thinking that it's a full unit, like what you see for a single family residence, it's not true. Yeah, it's just gonna be much smaller.
But the function is the same.
The function is the same.
Cool air inside the house by adding heat to the air outside the house around that compressor.
Mm-hmm, for sure.
But it still has a compressor?
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Oh, yes.
You gotta have a compressor.
It's in the, in the actual unit.
Inside the unit.
But it's not on the roof.
Not on the roof, inside the unit, and you're gonna have one humongous fan. Then that's taking outside air, blowing it over those coils, and putting it back outside again. Without any transfer of heat to the inside. Conduction or otherwise. Is that how these things work?
I can't speak to the details, but it's, it's generally within the standards of your, what you're talking about here.
Well, you spoke of talking to people in the county who make movable tiny houses. Did they have any heartburn about that?
No. No. No, it's, it's, and the, and the reason why is 'cause it's completely within a wheelhouse. Everything is within the unit itself. It's meant to be travel. It, it can be moved from one location to the other if necessary.
And that's part of the ANSI's, is that part of the ANSI standards, that everything's in, enclosed like?
Correct.
Everything's, everything's towable, if you will.
Yeah, I guess so.
Unless it's not on a chassis.
Right.
Well, you can still. Well, with the exception of the solar, 'cause solar is, solar is a different piece.
Sure, oh, I got you.
Is the reason that it can't be on the roof to, to meet the standards of fourteen feet? Mobility on the highway?
Yeah, I mean, if you.
Fourteen feet doesn't work everywhere on the highway.
Right, so it's, it's best to, to keep it as low as possible.
A- again, the, the movable tiny house purveyors that you spoke to. Didn't have any problem with keeping everything inside the structure.
No, their, their problems were, their, what we found. And I can have Sarah speak to this if I'm missing something here, was two pieces. One was the sewer piece. Which they're finding as being kind of a cost, um, piece.
They didn't mention anything about undergrounding all the other utilities as being a cost piece.
No, no, they were mentioning that piece.
But who's they?
Permit.
Yeah, Venture Tiny Homes was one of them. And then the second piece is the, is the, um, is the, is the decking, essentially.
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't talk about that.
Decking piece is kind of an interesting piece, because we have, we had a per- parameter or standard within it that required a minimum.
Said something like eighty square feet of deck.
Yeah, it was something like eighty square feet. There's different varieties throughout, and to a certain degree, if there's an opportunity to put one in, it should be a choice. Um, realistically.
But eighty square feet of DG next to the unit. Would arguably be equally usable for putting a picnic table or lounge chairs.
I think, I think, I think the nature of the deck is not only aesthetic, but it's just functional to get into the thing. 'Cause it's, if it's sitting three feet off the ground.
Steps somewhere. Whether it's steps to the deck or steps to the door.
Yeah, well, it's aesthetics. I think you have a picture of one, it's like, it looks like a cargo container, it just has steps. So if that's the aesthetics that we want, then we can say no deck.
You wanna see it?
Yeah, yeah, show it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, why not? We like, we like pictures. Pictures are good.
Commissioner Trent, you had brought up building separation as well.
Yeah, oh, thank you, thank you for the reminder, yes.
Oh, yes, the five.
The five versus ten. Yeah.
She does list.
Yeah, thank you. Good job, Sherri. See, there it is. That's a, that's a cargo, that's a cargo container without a deck. It's just got stairs.
Yep, just stairs.
So it's aesthetics.
I would call that post-modern design.
Yeah, that's kind of an aesthetic thing.
I would call that not acceptable.
Decked design.
Not acceptable.
I, I think at that point, we may be getting a little too detailed in terms of setting requirements. I like the idea of giving people choices. Uh, independent of whether I like movable tiny houses or not.
But I like the deck. See, the other one's got a smaller deck. It looks like the one on the left, that's the same.
Top left?
Yeah, it's kind of a same cargo style, but it's got a smaller.
Wide steps.
Yeah, smaller, much smaller, but like functional steps.
Mm-hmm.
But you can't even put a chair up there.
Yeah, but, you know, it's not necessarily a deck.
Goes down on the ground.
Yeah.
Or the slab, or whatever.
Well, also, if they're movable, we're saying that.
You pick it up and move it separately.
But if you build a deck, and then you're allowing, woo, very excited. You're allowing multiple tiny homes, the door isn't gonna be in the same spot every time. Right? If you're, if you're letting mul- people on chassis with tiny homes.
It's gotta be.
A movable, movable deck for the movable tiny home.
Just get a new deck.
One of the tiny homes that we ended up approving had a deck that was a part of the eighty, uh, not the eighty, the tiny house, so.
I, I like that. I personally like the decks. I don't know if eighty is necessary. I think that's a little excessive, but. Deck, I think it's functional.
So what, what's the requirement in her right now? There's no requirement for a deck?
I think there is, yeah.
Eighty square feet is a lot.
Where is that again?
Uh, page three of three has it.
Page three?
Three of three, uh, yeah, three of three.
Three of three? Oh? No. We're talking.
Yeah, where is it?
That's the staff report, that's not the resolution.
Oh, 'cause this is the new resolution. I don't think it's included in here.
So I'm not seeing that requirement, searching the ordinance.
Yeah.
If I'm being completely honest, I think when editing, there was a chance I took it out. Yes, but it was there previously.
Okay.
It didn't just appear out of thin air.
Okay, so it is still up for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then, yeah, and then.
That could be another line in the table.
Well, let, let's talk about that, and then we should talk about the, the ten feet thing.
Right.
Okay. So what do you guys think about decks?
I think they look nice, but I, I hesitate to require people to put them in.
What?
Decks.
Decks.
Like a small deck versus no deck? Examples, there's one right up there with no deck.
This is in somebody's backyard, right?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, didn't I see backyard?
I don't think, I mean, is that specific, that it has to be in the backyard?
Backyard.
I think the definition of.
Yeah, it was somewhere in here.
Tiny houses says it's behind, behind the primary residence somewhere.
Okay, alright.
So, it, you know, it's the primary residence that's going to have to look at the.
Oh, it, it, actually, definition, item fifteen on page three of the resolution. Says it's a residential dwelling unit that is accessory to a principal residential dwelling unit located on the same parcel. It doesn't say behind, or alongside, or in front.
Okay, wow. G says is sighted behind the principal residential dwelling unit.
Oh, G is sighted behind the principal. Okay, got it, on a permitted tiny house foundation. Okay, well, yeah. I guess, I guess we don't need a deck.
Well, I, I think it's something we should be discussing here and, and, and coming to some sort of a resolution.
Jamie, what do you think?
Even if it's a three to one vote, or whatever.
Sure.
We should decide.
I, I, um, I generally support-
Jamie.
I'm sorry, I genuinely support the idea of an eighty foot, eighty square foot deck, or, if you notice, the deck on that upper left-hand corner of the thing we're looking at, is actually, it's three or four different levels, it's not just one eighty-foot deck, it's a deck which has multiple levels on it, but I think that-
It's useless.
That-
It's useless as a deck.
Stairs, they're just big stairs.
Providing that the unit, um, to be considered as a tiny home, since it's being denied a site of its own, in terms of lawn, or any of the other things that one would normally think. An eighty-foot deck would be, to me, sort of the minimum, that you'd wanna put on a, on something you would call a tiny home, that you would be making as a home.
And in terms of dirt coverage, the steps are in addition to that eighty square feet. Because you're still up off the ground with this deck.
Yeah.
So, the steps are gonna cover additional ground.
Like the one on the bottom. That's, that's more-
Yeah.
That's a bigger deck.
That's center bottom.
Requirement that, that we, that we provide some number of square footage of dirt?
We, we can ask that it be put back into table A.
Oh.
No, what do you, what'd you say? Something about, there's no requirement for dirt?
That's my point. Is it, no, S- Steve, I was, Mr. Chairman, y- you suggested that, well, that's in addition to essentially what they're gonna get on ground level. But there's no obligation that the tiny home be provided with a, um, something on level that's open and usable by the person staying in the tiny home. Or is that, there's no-
I'm, I'm not understanding.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's alright. Uh, as, as I understood what you just said, um, the, the eighty-foot deck provision would be in addition to whatever was provided at ground level, dirt.
Oh, okay. What I, what I meant to say was, if you have a deck,
Right.
Stairs would be.
Like, center, lower, center picture.
Right.
Then any steps that get you from that deck to, to grade-
Right.
Are gonna take up additional floor space.
Right.
Over and above the eighty-square-foot deck.
Well, they aren't in the upper left-hand corner one, the gray, they're the blu- blue-gray house.
Yeah, I would, I, I would argue whether that is a series of decks or a series of stairs.
Yeah, they're big steps.
I, I wouldn't call any part of that a deck. But, but if-
That's what your definition of a deck is.
A place where you can actually put a chair.
What would Lucas call that on, on the upper left-hand side? Is that a deck or a steps?
It looks like stairs.
Looks like stairs.
Deck has space for a chair or a table, or something.
Something.
An exercise bike.
So what's the consensus here? Should we have a, should we have a deck or not have a deck?
I, I, I'm leaning towards leaving it up to-
Top, center has no deck, but one could argue that grade level there takes the place of a deck. You have steps down to the deck.
I, I, I'm leaning towards leaving it up to the property owner.
I would too, I think.
Yeah.
I agree.
Let them decide.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll leave, we'll leave a deck row out of table A.
Um, I did, so let's talk about the, uh, the clearance.
Oh.
Where is that in here? I can't find it.
It is, it's covered by page six, item B, "All applicable regulations of the municipal code shall be met." Including the building, residential fire, and other requirements. Right there. I'm sorry, page six.
B.
Okay, well, that, that's great.
Part of that.
Right, so I guess my question, if, if, building separation in the code is ten feet, and then in here we say it's five feet, do we have a, an issue?
Yes.
I think we have an issue.
Make it ten feet. Okay, so-
Or, where, where, where is the ten, where is the five?
Page five of seven, right here.
Page five.
Defensible.
Defensible space, yeah.
Should we just say, say a line with the code?
Why don't we just take that line out?
Yeah, and just-
And the code applies, and it says ten feet separation between structures.
Because then people won't notice it, and read it, and plan it, plan for it. This way, they realize upfront, oh, I gotta have space for that.
Alright, I'm perfectly happy to change five to ten there, rather than delete that row.
Yeah, and just so the commission's aware, and well, we may very well do this when we get to city council as a part of this item, is there's gonna be an FAQ of some sort, um, frequently asked questions, and on top of that, is gonna be basically, these are the things that you're gonna need to boil, to boil this down, so they're not, people aren't having to read this thing.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
We're just gonna, like what we do for the ADUs.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's good, okay.
Are we agreed on page five, then to change five to ten?
The code actually reads fifteen feet if there's windows.
Oh, fifteen feet in the code if there's windows.
What?
Good job, Sherri.
There you go.
Yeah.
Fifteen feet if there's a window.
If there's windows.
Why?
If it's not a solid, that has to do with fire.
What does the window?
The fire is gonna break the windows. If you don't have windows, you can be closer.
Tempered glass.
That's, that's the building code. So maybe we take out, maybe, I, I think just reference the code. Sounds pretty nuanced. I know that we might be better to have clarity to align with the code, but-
It's different for different things.
Into the, the frequently asked question thing, I think that suffices.
Yep, okay.
So this, just is taken out.
Instead of the five lines of type there, we could just say per the municipal code.
Yeah, I like that. An adjacent exterior deck area consistent with the defensible stip-based standards of public resource code section. I think leave that part in there, 'cause that's different than our code, right? Public resource code section?
Yeah, that is different.
Yeah, 'cause that's related to the deck, if they did build a deck.
So, in accordance with the Ohio Municipal Code, and consistent with the requirements of PRC 4291.
Yeah, I like that. Cool.
Wow.
Nice.
Okay, so that's-
And then I did have another item that I wanted to talk to you guys about. So, some other cities do have limitations on what kind of materials can be on the outside of the tiny home, like, no aluminum siding, no fiberglass, no shipping containers, no cargo containers. Do we wanna have the same sort of thing, or are we okay with shipping containers, cargo containers, fiberglass, and aluminum siding?
I think the requirement is that be consistent with the primary residence.
It doesn't say that, so it's consistent with the neighborhood.
Oh, gosh. That's about as vague as you could be, since we have a lot of eclectic neighborhoods here in town, as we should.
Can I just? I think it makes sense to call out specific materials that you don't wanna see.
Yeah.
Good.
So can you bring up that picture again, that example? We like pictures. Okay, so the top one, top middle, that's a cargo container.
Is it?
I think so.
It sure looks like one.
Sure looks like one.
I'd still consider that to be postmodern.
Yeah, okay.
From a design standpoint. A cargo container wouldn't be that tall.
Wouldn't be that tall, okay, you could, you have a good point. And maybe it's a cargo container with a roof on it.
With the second floor.
Cargo container with a hat, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, you could be right. Maybe that's not a cargo container, but-
It looks too narrow, too.
Yeah.
Cargo container's only eight feet.
Yeah, they're each-
Eight by twenty is a TEU.
But that doesn't even look, oh, god.
So what do you guys think? Shipping containers, cargo, no shipping containers, no cargo containers, or are we gonna allow that?
Um, I think we ought to say just that, because we want something that looks like a house.
Yeah, I say no shipping containers, no cargo containers.
Yeah. And I, I have to say, from personal experience, I, I used to have a townhouse down in Redondo. And there was about three blocks from the house, a house that was built using shipping containers.
Oh, yeah.
Stacked one on another and side by side, and-
It's getting more popular.
Mm-hmm, it is.
If, if the neighbors, for blocks around, could have organized a tar and feather party, that parcel owner would have been front and center.
Yeah, okay.
It was ugly.
Yeah, okay, I like, I think that's good. Now, I also think that we should say no aluminum siding, no fiberglass siding.
Why?
What, what, what is left?
I think you, well, like, you've got visualizations up there, you've got board and bat, you've got wood, you've got-
It's all burnable.
Vinyl, vinyl siding? You can have it on a house.
Oh, yeah.
You could have aluminum siding on a house.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm, I keep, I think the reason is for RVs, travel trailers, that sort of thing. But if we already say no travel trailers, no RVs, then I guess you could have aluminum siding, but do we even have houses with aluminum siding anymore? I haven't seen any. Could be wrong, I don't know.
I'm not sure how you can tell-
Popular that is anymore.
I don't know how you can tell aluminum siding from painted wood siding from the street.
It screams at you.
It does stick out, yeah, and it's, I don't think it's that popular anymore. I know it used to be popular back in the day, but-
It's in somebody's backyard.
I agree.
That's true.
Alright, what about fiberglass siding? Is that a popular construction material?
I don't know that fiberglass-
Sounds flammable to me.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think it would fit, it would fit, um, either of the ANSI standards. Well, it wouldn't fit the ANSI standards for, for compatibility from a fire standpoint.
So that might, I guess those two might be not needed.
I think it gets to the point of what you, what this commission was talking about earlier, which is the travel trailer and the- that, that piece, I think, covers the concerns that you have there.
I think, I think you're right. So I'm good with that. I think then we just do the no shipping container, no cargo container.
Yeah, I think the shipping container is not covered, so I think it's important, if you wanna call that out, you call that out.
Good idea.
Cool. Alright, I think we have one more thing to talk about, is the sanitary sewer hookup. Combustible, compostable toilets versus direct hookups.
It's not in there now. I'm not in favor of adding it.
Are, are you saying not in favor of allowing it?
I'm not in favor of adding compostable toilets to the ordinance as an alternative.
So you're denying the use of compostable toilets, is that, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying.
Yes.
He's not calling it out, he's just calling out what's in the code. I mean, what's in this, what's in the ordinance already.
Ask. I mean, if, if it's not in the code-
Prohibition by omission.
Still do, use, employ it.
You look at the land use tables in Title X, and they say, if it doesn't say you can do it, then you can't do it.
Unless. Unless you can find-
You have variants.
If it's, if it's a similar use, then, then you're going by the similar use, not the omission of that particular use.
Here, there's no unless.
Now, does this, does the current ordinance, the way it's written, it says it's gotta be hooked up to either the sewer, or it's gotta be, is there, um, I haven't read that part, I apologize.
An alternative?
Yeah, what is the alternatives to being direct hooked up? Is it- There a septic tank?
There is, well, is that C?
It's, it's, it's not called a septic tank, but-
Not called a septic tank?
We were saying we didn't want these things to be added to septic areas.
It does have a sewer or septic, but if you do the septic, it's gotta be approved through a building. Um, and on top of that, it becomes an LA County, um, jurisdictional piece, where we have to go through a whole set of-
Lots of hoops.
Lots of hoops to, to-
Regional Water Quality Control Board stuff, and all of that.
Got it.
So, I think I mentioned this back in February, there's a whole process, and it's pretty expensive, um, in order to maintain it, especially when you're adding load onto an already existing septic system.
I'm, I'm just-
It's not something that is prohibitive, but maybe from a cost standpoint, it's prohibitive.
Yeah.
There's a process.
No, I got it. I mean, the only reason I'm opposed to it is, um, you know, I think in certain cases, you might have these tiny homes, you might rent them out, it might be part of a, you know, rental agreement, whatnot. And then it's up to the tenant to empty the combustible toilet, I mean, I don't know, it's kinda sketchy.
We, we have yet to establish that the county EHD is going to allow it.
Do that, yeah.
If it comes back at some point that, that staff is able to ascertain that EHD is now allowing it, then we could consider it.
Yeah, that's a good point. I like that. Okay. Yeah. If the county allows it, then we'll consider it.
At the moment, I, I don't think, I don't think we could assume that writing it in would make it allowable. 'Cause it's a public health thing.
What's, what's the jurisdiction of the County of Los Angeles versus the County of?
No, it's the, it's the Los An- it's not Los Angeles County, it's the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board. It's like SCAG, Southern California area governments.
Yeah.
It's, it, it's for everything in a certain area, um, which includes us.
They want the groundwater contaminated. Got it.
We already have enough of that.
I'm sure.
I walk up Foothill Road about every second day, and when we've had a lot of rain, you know that the septic systems in the Arbolata have overflowed. I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah. Yuck. Okay.
Alright.
Well-
Do we have, do we have more changes, or should we just review what we have in the resolution?
Oh, I did, I apologize. I have one more si- small thing.
Great.
This is just more of a clarity point for myself. When we have permitted zones as an open space, um, how does that work? Like, how would I go about, let's say I'm a tiny homeowner, and I wanna put my tiny home on an open space? How would I go about doing that? Who owns the open space?
It's privately owned.
They're privately owned?
Yeah.
Oh.
Unless, unless Ojai Valley Conservancy owns them.
Oh, got it, okay.
Well, even the conservancy, the conservancy is not a part of the government.
No.
No.
Still private.
It's, it's privately owned.
Allow it. Okay, alright, well, that makes sense. I was just curious, I didn't know. Alright, good.
But you still have to underground all the utilities.
Yeah.
And all the rest of that stuff.
Have a primary on site.
What if there is no primary on site?
Then there's no tiny house on site.
Nice.
All right.
It's gotta be behind it.
Just want to make sure that what we do is, is legally defensible, okay?
I think Larry has a question before we.
Can't hear you.
Larry, can you come to the podium and ask a question? As long as the chair is okay with the question.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can you put a mobile home or an RV on an empty piece of dirt?
Not the RV.
Hold on, let's make sure we clarify the question. Your question is, is can you put in?
RV or a mobile home on an empty piece of dirt with utilities?
Mobile home that's through the ANSI standards, that's not a tiny house, and it's sited, and follows all of the building code requirements, then yes.
So if there's a mobile home, like the kind they have at the mobile home parks?
Those don't fit ANSI standards.
So here's, here's, here's the other amazing thing about the way in which our code works. It's gotta meet all of our design standards.
Okay.
As a primary. An RV.
Ours too.
An RV would not fit that standard.
RV wouldn't fit, yeah. Okay. So let's start, we're looking at Exhibit 1 to Attachment A, starting with page 1, first recital. We changed which provides complete living, independent living quarters to provides a complete living, independent living area. Correct?
Yep.
Okay. Second recital, just a typo, cited with an S instead of cited with a C. Did we have anything on page 2 or 3? I think we fixed.
Just as a point of clarity for the commission, we will need to add a section to make clear that we're repealing the prior section related to tiny homes to add this entire new section. So it was a subsection of 10-2.109 Sub-M.
Seventeen oh nine, yeah.
We'll have to repeal that one. So that change will be going to council once you're done with this ordinance.
So that's part of the resolution, that 10-2.1709M is hereby repealed.
Yes.
And replaced by the following.
Yes.
Or some words to that effect.
Yes.
Okay, let's make sure we get that in there. It's probably in section, it's probably in Section 2 on Page 2, where it says this section is hereby added. We probably should have the repealing of 10-2.1709M right there.
Correct, we'll add it in that space.
Okay, cool. On Page 4. In the table, where it says number of movable tiny houses allowed on site.
Oh, wait, wait.
Were we gonna?
Before we get to that, number 1. Yeah, Page, what, Page 3? Did we have something on Page 3?
Was there something about adding if applicable?
If applicable.
At the bottom?
No, because this, this thing said if on chassis, so that.
Okay, we fixed it that way.
Yeah, and on number 1, were we gonna clarify that sentence to make it a little clearer, or are we gonna leave it as is? I'm sorry, Page 4, 7, number 1. That we talked about.
What did we, what did we decide to say there?
So my comment on here says it's an if then statement, the.
There you go.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
So basically, if it's, if it's on a chassis, then it has to be registered with the DMV.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe if the phrase if on chassis was moved to right behind a tiny house?
If, if movable tiny house is on chassis, then it must be registered.
Yeah, that makes better.
Yeah, I like that, that's clear.
Yes.
Yeah, it was just.
Listen to the English teacher over here.
Yeah, it was just a clarification, please.
In the table, then, the next thing I had was in the table.
Yeah, I did too.
The line for number of movable tiny houses allowed on site.
We're gonna change that.
And it was, I think we agreed, 1 on a single-family residential parcel, or up to 2 on a multifamily residential parcel.
Well, we gotta talk about that 2 on a multifamily too, right? Do we have to discuss that? Because we're discussing to remove it to 1 versus 2. Because it says, it says that we are allowing for 2 tiny homes on a multifamily residence.
Right.
So the suggestion was to limit that to 1.
1 on a single-family residence.
Multifamily.
And 1 on a multifamily residence.
1 on single-family, 1 on multifamily.
That's the way it reads right now.
No, it reads.
It just says 1. It doesn't specify what sort of property it is.
Right, but it says number of tiny homes allowed on site, and it says.
1.
1, yeah, but on multifamily, we're allowing for 2.
Right. Right, that's why, that's why I thought we should fix this to say 1 here and 2 there.
Yeah, but we're, the suggestion is we do 1 on both.
Should we limit it to 1 on multifamily?
Yes, yes.
Properties is what John is asking.
Yes, I think we should, to your point about density.
An apartment complex has already utilized their, their space to a fairly well. I just can't think of a, of an apartment complex that has room.
Because they already get 2, they get 2 ADUs already, and they get a junior ADU, and then they get a tiny home.
An apartment complex.
Or maybe 2 tiny homes. They are still subject to the lot coverage.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maximum that's, that's elsewhere in the code.
I know, I get it.
They've maximized.
I say, I say 1 is fine. It's enough.
Okay, I, I would, I would rather not limit it to 1. I would say the lot coverage.
Limited.
Is gonna do it.
I think so, too.
I mean, yeah, I guess you could be right, but I still, I think to be very clear, to, if I'm reading this and I have, I have a multifamily unit, and I'm looking at this, and I'm like, I'm gonna build a tiny home, and it says I can build 2. And then I'm like, oh, wait, I can't build 2, because the other here, this other thing in the code says I can't. It's very confusing. But if it just says you can only build 1, perfect, I'll build 1.
Or if it said 1 on a single-family parcel, or up to 2, up to 2, on a multifamily.
Yeah, but then if I'm reading this and I say up to 2, great, I'm gonna do 2, and then elsewhere in the code it says you can't.
It says you can still only cover so much of the ground.
Yeah, it's an FAR, FAR provision, that's pretty typical, that, that is not part of.
FAR and lot coverage, yeah.
This could be something addressed by the FAQ and guidance that staff is creating to, to avoid the confusion that you're talking about.
I, I don't.
There's a difference between 1 period and 1 here and up to 2 there.
Agreed, but part of his concern was confusion. It could be made clear, whatever the standard is, if you go up to 2.
John, isn't, I mean, you just don't want to see 2.
I didn't know.
On a lot period.
You already got, you already have an apartment complex, and then you got 2 ADUs, and then you can, I think, and then you have a 1 junior ADU, I think having 2 tiny home lots is just.
Yeah, the junior ADU could add 150 square feet.
Yeah.
To the primary building.
I think it's a little excessive.
But you're still subject to the lot coverage requirement.
And you're still subject to parking requirements that we're.
And building separation requirements.
I agree, I, I hear you, I hear you, which might all be prohibitive, but I still like the idea of making it very clear and just say 1.
Well, we can vote on that.
Well, let's.
Yeah, okay.
Let's, let's get the sense of the commission. 1 or 1 only, or up to 2, subject to all the other limitations.
1, up to 2, subject to the other limitations.
Same.
Yeah, that's how I feel. Up to 2, subject to all the other limitations in the code.
All right, I guess I got voted out on that one.
If I, if I shared, Trent.
Sure.
More than likely, I can't think of any examples where.
It's not gonna happen.
I think the building separation is gonna kill most of it.
Even if they put in a new apartment, if, if they can find a lot big enough and put in a new apartment complex, they're gonna fill it up with apartments. I mean, this would be an expensive way to handle the property.
For sure, agreed.
Okay.
All right.
The parking line.
Oh, yeah, we never talked, we did talk about that.
Then, I think we're gonna, we're gonna delete the word not.
Yeah.
And.
Require 1 additional.
After require, and 1 parking space.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And a dispensed of the air conditioning compressors.
Hold on, before we, before we go to the next page, I think we were looking at adding a minimum standard of 150 square feet within this chart, correct?
Yeah.
Since we had a maximum size line.
So minimum would go above the maximum, right, or below it, whatever the point of order.
Didn't we have a minimum?
Granted, it's also on Page 3, but it's kind of lost in the text there.
Yep.
I think it's a good place to put it in the table.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that is good, okay.
150.
150.
440 max.
Minimum FA, okay. Now, okay, over onto Page 5, the little parenthetical phrase gravel or dirt, how did that come out finally?
Well, I think we were.
Get rid of it because it does not have its wheels, so it's gonna be on a slab.
We added a line at the end to make clear gravel or dirt shall not be permitted as a foundation for movable tiny houses with wheels removed.
Okay, so you took out the parenthetical phrase and added the words you just said at the end of that?
So, we realized.
Already says it.
Because we were so focused on gravel and dirt, we missed the context of the rest of the sentence.
Read the first sentence.
So in the first bullet point, it, that sentence was added. Because the first, the first subsection relates to.
Must sit on a permanent, correct, okay, yeah.
Right, and it's emphasizing.
The parenthetical phrase.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay.
Well, the parenthetical is staying in the second.
Yep.
Subsection. Nothing about that changed, because it's permitted. It's permitted if there are still wheels on the chassis.
But that, that second section.
But that's the second sub-bullet.
Does not have wheels, so we really.
No, does not have its wheels removed.
Yeah, the wheels are still on it.
Would you prefer, has wheels instead of in the negative?
Okay.
Uh, yeah, there, I mean, sure, yeah.
Still has its wheels attached?
If the movable tiny house has its, has wheels.
Yeah, there you go, there you go.
Or we could just leave it as it is. It's up to you.
I'm fine leaving it.
I'm, that's fine, leave it, yeah, okay. Okay, then down to the last line of the table, defense, defensible space requirement, we changed it to.
Urban Municipal Code, and then also.
Urban Municipal Code.
PRC.
Consistent with. The defensible space requirements in PRC 4291.
We also added a new section in the table regarding materials, that shipping containers and cargo containers are prohibited.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, great, yep. All right. Page 6.
A.
Note A at the top, I think we said, we said.
Shall not.
Shall not be permitted under this section and shall not move under their own power.
Yes.
All right. Section E, small e, fees.
City will require proof of payment.
Yeah, well, that's, that's covered under the code.
Yeah, it's already.
So as a quick amendment, because you had enumerated all of the agencies, I have utilities and other agencies may charge fees as allowed by state law.
Yeah, great.
Should we say state and local law?
Okay.
Yeah.
Just in case.
Yeah, utilities and other, you said?
Other agencies.
Yeah, may charge fees as allowed by state and local law, okay. And then down to.
Subsection H.
H, we deleted subsection 2 and took the number off of suction 1. And then it reads the way we want? Is that right?
Also, didn't, didn't we rework the title for H?
Yes, we did.
Yes, it's called, it should be movable tiny houses on multifamily.
Dwelling.
Parcels, or. Whatever the appropriate term is there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's good.
And then we should, we should fix the first sentence of the remaining paragraph, and try to avoid the phrase multifamily dwelling movable tiny homes.
Yeah.
Houses. Just apply equally to.
Oh, yeah.
MTHs on multifamily dwelling parcels.
Yeah, I think, I think Taylor already had that one.
Yeah, I have switched those 2.
She got that, okay, good.
We have clarifying language, so, yeah, to remove that.
Okay. And on Page 7.
Short-term rental.
Short-term rental, change 3 calendar months to 1.
Sweet, nice work. Very thorough. I thought, I thought, that's what I thought too, I was like, oh, it'll be a quick one. Guess not.
Nothing is simple when you're writing law.
True, true, all right. Okay.
That's, that's why, my son's an attorney, his favorite response to a question is, it depends.
That is a good lawyer response.
Okay, so, then, if we're in agreement on those changes, then a motion to approve the proposed ordinance as amended would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion?
I'm good.
Sherry, let's call the roll then.
Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Colossi?
Yes. Hallelujah, okay? And.
We killed that thing.
We move on to Item 3, future agenda items. Is it true, Lucas, that we, that we still have nothing ready to go 2 weeks from now?
Correct.
Then.
There actually may be another item ready to go for the 17th, we're just awaiting to see if they get stuff back to us in time.
Okay.
So.
Oh, you're gonna add to the daily road subject?
They're making promises, but I've seen lots of promises being made and typically not delivering on those promises, so.
Okay.
If they don't make it by the date, then you won't see, it'll just be that one item.
Do we need a vote on canceling the July 3 meeting? Just consensus that we recommend staff cancel the meeting?
Yeah, consensus is fine. We've already shown this on a previous.
Yeah, I think we did on our last meeting.
I think we did, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think we did.
That daily road piece could take a while, it sounds like.
Yeah, that one could be a little meaty.
Yeah, so I'm not gonna go into the details on this, but I will say this, the intention of this is likely to take 2 meetings for, first with discussion and questions that come up. Now, if none of that happens, maybe it's 1, maybe it's 1 meeting, but I anticipate 2 meetings.
It's going to happen.
So.
That was, that was my impression from the ex parte contact that I had, was that there were a number of issues with, with the neighborhood, and specific neighbors. And so I expect it's gonna take a while to work through it.
Yep.
Okay, Director's Report? Anything else?
Been busy around here, but.
Tired, he said.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I've done enough talking tonight, but, look, the things that are happening at council level and the things that are happening here, you know, we're, we're doing business as we're supposed to be, so.
Okay. No, I'll ask it after the meeting. Commissioner members' report? Anyone have anything you want to add?
Was there a, did we have a? Someone was supposed to go to Mac, I think, on Monday.
Me.
You missed it.
I can get notes.
Okay, I can send out the Cliff Notes, once I get them back, so I'll just forward them to the, to the Commission.
You can, you can, you can read them in it, just contact Maruha.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, she's pretty good about getting that stuff out.
The thing that's missing is giving them a little bulletized report as a minimum.
Of what we've been doing.
Of what we've been doing since their last meeting.
Yep.
That's really what they want to hear about.
Yep.
That's being written up in the paper.
Just for the record, yeah.
Yeah, it's all in the paper. She can read it. I'm just kidding.
Okay, and I see our city council liaison is not present, and so no other business being before the commission at 8:59, 8:49, excuse me, we are adjourned.